I'd like to call the city council meeting to order for February the 18th, 2014. Sondra, would you please call the row?
Shotmire?
Present.
Adam?
Here.
Long?
Here.
Gray?
Here.
Marsh?
Here.
Kenyon?
Here.
Teddy?
Here.
Tenet?
Here.
Mayor Jordan?
Here. You're joining me in reciting pledge of allegiance. My pledge of allegiance is to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone.
Literally, everyone.
Yes, I do mean everyone.
Everyone's clear.
First order of business is the consent agenda.
Ms. Mayor, I think we have an agenda addition.
Okay.
Alderman Long has a presentation, I think.
Okay. Councilmember Long?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I've brought forth an amendment to section 92 on animals. I did do a memo, I'm afraid it didn't make it to everyone's desk, but the reason I'm doing it is so that we can consider it at the same time as the urban agriculture ordinance. It's some basic housekeeping, changing some definitions, and the animal codes match the urban agriculture ordinance, and I'd like to have it on this agenda so that within the three readings, they can proceed accordingly and match up.
And you want to discuss it when we discuss the animal ordinance or now?
I'd like this to be placed on the agenda after the animals or after the urban agriculture ordinance.
Okay. Is that what you understand?
Well, I just know our agenda says agenda additions come now, but I will defer to the city clerk. That's gonna mess up Granicus, which is our system, so people can see this later on.
It's your agenda, you can add it wherever you want to. We would just prefer that if you're going to add something to the agenda, you mention it right at the beginning of the agenda.
Okay, so, Councilmember Long, would it be all right to add it now and then talk about it during the animal agr- or the urban agri ordinance?
I'd like to place it on the agenda directly following that.
Yes.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
So, yeah, this motion to spend the rules and place it on the agenda after the urban agriculture.
All right, very well. Any comments on that?
Mayor?
Yes, Mayor?
I wonder, would it be possible for us to have our Mount Kessler presentation before we start our agenda, so that these folks don't have to be here so long?
Well...
I would make that in the form of a motion, if that's possible.
We have one motion on the floor already. Let's handle Mr. Long, Alderman Long's motion first. His motion to spend the rules, to place this new item after the urban agricultural ordinance.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion on that? Sondra, would you please call the row?
Shotmire?
Yes.
Adam?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes.
Kenyon?
Yes.
Teddy?
Yes.
Tenet?
Yes.
Okay. Now, the next amendment is to motion is... Adella, you want to?
Yes, I would like for the Mount Kessler group to be allowed to make their presentation early, before we move on, with the consent agenda.
Okay. Well, all right.
I will point out that before the Mount Kessler discussion, there would only be the consent agenda, there'd be two items of unfinished business, both of which are gonna be tabled, probably without any discussion, so it would not take very long to get to the Mount Kessler item in its normal place.
I read brief facts.
Okay, you'll read facts.
I'll read facts. Okay. All right. For everyone's entertainment, now I will read the consent agenda. Number one, the approval of the February 4th, 2014 city council meeting minutes. Number two, McClellan Consulting Engineers Incorporated tax order number 10, resolution to approve tax order number 10 of McClellan Consulting Engineers Incorporated, in the amount of $36,050 for project design bidding services associated with Terminal Apron Rehabilitation Project, and to approve a budget adjustment of $36,050. Number three, Garber Engineers LLC, a resolution approving contract Garber Engineers LLC, in amount not to exceed $352,879 for the design of Rupel Road from Starry Night View to Mount Comfort Road, and to approve a budget adjustment of $352,879. Number four, Community Development Block Grant, CDBG agreement, resolution authorizing the mayor to execute a Community Development Block Grant, CDBG agreement, for 2014, when received in the estimated amount of $540,700, and approving the 2014 action plan. Number five, min resolution number 07-14, resolution amending resolution number 07-14 to change the awarding of bid number 14-04 for the purchase of hillside gravel from Leving and Son Trucking Incorporated to Les Rogers Incorporated from materials picked up, in the amount of $1.49 per ton, and authorizing the use of other bidders based on price and availability as needed through the end of calendar year 2014. Number six, Combs Park Tree Mitigation Resolution, approving budget adjustment, in total amount of $4,250 to transfer a tree escrow balance of, for the planting of mitigation trees in Combs Park. Number seven, 2014 Keep America Beautiful Dr. Pepper Snapple Group Grant, resolution authorizing applications, I had to practice that, a resolution authorizing application for 2014 Keep America Beautiful Dr. Pepper Snapple Group Grant, in the amount of $6,800. The last one is, number eight, Roto Chopper Go Bagger, a resolution approving a budget adjustment, that's a real name, budget adjustment, in the amount of $18,500 for recognized revenue received from the auction and sale of unit 479-2005, Roto Chopper Go Bagger 250.
I mean, we accept the consent agenda.
Second.
We have a motion to second to accept consent agenda as read. Sondra, would you please call the row?
Shotmire?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes.
Kenyon?
Yes.
Teddy?
Yes.
Tenet?
Yes.
Okay, under unfinished business, number one, amend chapter 178, an ordinance repeal 178.03 Sidewalk Vendors and enact a replacement 178.03 Sidewalk Vendors and Food Trucks, and to repeal 178.04 Outdoor Mobile Vendors Located on Private Property and enact a replacement 178.04 Outdoor Mobile Vendors Located on Private Property.
Mayor, this item is being heard at the ordinance review committee, or is planned to be heard at ordinance review on Thursday at 5:30 in this room, and staff would recommend that it be tabled to the March 18th city council meeting.
Now...
So moved.
Second.
A motion to second to table amend chapter 178 on the food trucks, basically, and sidewalk vendors. Any comments on that or discussion? Okay. Sondra, would you please call the row?
Shotmire?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes.
Kenyon?
Yes.
Teddy?
Yes.
Tenet?
Yes.
Okay. What discussion we have on that? Yes, Matthew?
I don't mind how we table it, but I wanted everyone to know that I spoke with the applicant this afternoon, he explained a little bit of what had been going on, and assured me this would be the last request to table it.
We have a motion to second to table indefinitely, though.
If you just table it to the next meeting, there won't be any issue about re-notification because it is rezoning, so you might want to just go ahead and table it for one more meeting and make sure the applicant shows up to that meeting.
Councilmember Long?
I don't know. I'm gonna let my motion stand.
You're gonna leave it? Okay.
I have a question.
Yes.
Where are the notification requirements?
Well, Jeremy, I don't know if we, if it's tabled indefinitely, I don't know if there's any further re-notification. Normally, you don't have to re-notify since it's been to the planning commission when it comes to city council, but when you table something indefinitely, it's almost like dismissing it and saying it's not gonna be heard, and that's why I'm a little bit concerned that that might trigger something that would require re-notification. Jeremy, I don't know how many times we've experienced this, do you have any input on whether re-notification might be required?
We've not experienced it a lot, I don't believe there'd be any formal notification. Some of the concern there is obviously that if someone's following the agenda, it might just pop up on an agenda whenever their applicant requests it, so it's not really published until that tentative agenda comes out, that's really the only downfall, actually, we don't have any ordinance requirements to re-notify if something's tabled indefinitely.
Okay. Any other discussion on it? All right. We have a motion to second to table indefinitely. Sondra, would you please call the row?
Shotmire?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes.
Kenyon?
Yes.
Teddy?
Yes.
Tenet?
Yes.
Okay. All right. On new business, number one, Mount Kessler acquisition, resolution to authorize Mayor Jordan to apply for and accept a 50/50 matching grant from the Walton Family Foundation in the amount of $1,500,000 to use this grant, and $1,600,000 out of reserves to purchase about 328 acres of Mount Kessler from Chambers Bank, and to build a trailhead, to approve a land swap with Chambers Bank to support a parkland dedication of about 48 acres for future parkland credit, and to approve the attached budget adjustment. Jeremy?
Council mayor and staff are proud to present a proposal tonight for the city to acquire the Mount Kessler Preserve, to be held by the city in perpetuity. As you all know, many of you have been out to the site, hyped some of the property, Mount Kessler has been identified for a number of years through multiple organizations, through specific individuals that likely speak tonight, as a gem in the city worthy of preservation. The property, as you can see on the map here, is situated in the southwest portion of the city. It's directly adjacent to the city's 200-acre regional park, which is planned for active and programmed sports activities. It's also adjacent, importantly, to an existing network of properties that have been designated for conservation and trail activities. There are conservation easements almost surrounding this property, to the south of Kessler Mountain Road, to the north, to the northeast, and so we feel it's very well situated for use by the city in the future. Property is currently owned by Chambers Bank. You may remember, a few years ago, Chambers Bank donated 200 acres to the city for our regional sports park, and we've been in discussion with them on this particular piece of property as well. After several discussions with Mr. Sharp, who is here with us tonight, the city approached both the Fayetteville Natural Heritage Association and Walton Family Foundation, at the direction of the mayor, to ascertain if we really were interested in the property, trying to acquire the property. There was no for-sale sign up of the property, so we obviously had to go down that road and make sure it was able to be acquired, but we did begin conversations, first of all, to see what we could, what we had to work with. We got an informal commitment from the Fayetteville Natural Heritage Association, and knowing that, we then approached the Walton Family Foundation, which ultimately became a pivotal element in us being able to present this to you tonight. In an effort to permanently place this asset in the public domain, and also to be able to maintain and expand the trail system, which is mountain biking, hikers, bird watchers, a number of individuals utilized on the mountain today, that was really our purpose when we approached the foundation. Our vision was to utilize the already forged partnerships with Mount Kessler Greenway Advocates, Fayetteville Natural Heritage Association, Ozark Offroad Cyclists, International Mountain Biking Association, university, Fayetteville Public Schools, and others, to develop programs on Mount Kessler that emphasize and expand upon established outdoor recreation, in the form of mountain biking, hiking, and nature study. We plan to use those existing relationships in the design and development and expansion, and ultimately, long-term maintenance of the property, including the trail system, for recreational use, to foster working outdoor classrooms and laboratory spaces for use by the university and surrounding schools, to provide for the study of native Arkansas flora, fauna, and geological rock formations, to promote awareness of watershed and natural resource preservation, and to provide places for healthy, active lifestyles for future generations' well-being. Our ultimate goal is to promote stewardship of this land in a responsible manner, and to preserve it for use by citizens of Northwest Arkansas in years to come. It is important to note that there is development rights associated with this property, and so we entered into that conversation with the owners, knowing that. As you all know, the failed development South Pass PZD, which ultimately allowed us to gain and acquire the 200 acres donated parkland, situated, portions of which are situated on this property, so there are development rights associated with that. However, we felt the proximity of Mount Kessler to Fayetteville's future regional park was really fortuitous, and it was a major reason this acquisition made sense for Fayetteville, and also expanding our highly programmed, active recreational space to include other users, and this roughly 380 acres of natural, active, and passive open space creates a place unlike many in the region or the state. It also allows us for, to provide connectivity for our multi-use trail system, parts of which are planned in this area. We really believe that this network of trails and open space creates almost 600 acres of parkland, and that ultimately will be a legacy acquisition for the city of Fayetteville. I'm gonna break the presentation into two parts, one for the buyer, and one from the seller, and that's how it's organized within your staff memo as well. We obtained approval informally from Walton Family Foundation through a concept document to apply for and accept a grant up to $1.5 million. There are contingencies with that grant, obviously, which they call output and outcome performance measures. Obviously, we have to match that grant, at least, 50/50 matching grant in form of cash. The purpose of the grant was to permanently place this asset and its mountain biking trails in the public domain, so that's a criteria or condition of the grant. The city must execute the contract within a certain amount of time, must outline a plan and process for permanently placing this 376 acres that we're acquiring in the public domain. We must commit to maintaining and operating all current and future trails to very specific standards that are also outlined, and then we'll do a survey, essentially establishing a baseline of use, and then increasing that use over a certain number of months and years. As I mentioned, for the city, we will provide match funding, we'll also provide publicly-accessible trailhead within 90 days of a formal acquisition of property, so that's the reason you have a portion of the budget adjustment in your packet. And then, obviously, we will help with the targets on the trail usage, to increase trail usage, and ultimately, they want an increase in usership of the overall property and awareness of the property. In order to accept the grant, actually, apply and accept the grant, we need your approval tonight by this resolution, and that's how Mr. Williams has written that. We've also had a wonderfully productive relationship with a number of individuals and entities that have a vested interest in securing this property for permanent public use. FNHA is one such group, and we've had wonderfully productive conversations and a formal commitment of $300,000 over a three-year period, after conversations with Bob Calk and John Coleman, both of whom are on the board of directors, and we've worked very closely with them and Mr. Sharp, who owns this property, and as you all know, has been an extremely important advocate in this area for us to make this occur. This will be recognized, actually, as a separate agenda item, we will bring that forward at a different agenda, but I wanted to make sure everyone in that room and you all are aware of that commitment as well, it's an important component of this acquisition. On the seller's side, for several months, the city's been in discussions with Chambers Bank representatives about the feasibility of purchasing some or all of this property. Initially, the asking price was well out of reach for the city. I've described that process to all of you individually, and there were some ups and downs in our conversations, but the mayor said, "Take heart, we think we can do this," and so we continued those conversations. Through some creative problem-solving negotiation, the city staff felt we had a very good compromise. It gets a little bit complicated, and I'll scroll onto my next map, because there's a combination of trail easements, property acquisition, property trade, land donation, so there's a number of things going on to make this work for the mutual benefit of both parties, but we do feel like everyone's walking away from this deal feeling good, I think. I want to thank Mr. John Chambers of Chambers Bank, Hunter Haines of HCH Consulting, they worked tirelessly in our conversations, as well as J.R. Meeks of Chambers Bank, for being very willing to discuss the different options. Obviously, it would have been easy just to say, "Here's the purchase price, take it or leave it," but they were very willing to discuss these different options. With this agreement, Chambers Bank would sell approximately 328 acres of the property for $3 million. They would donate approximately 48 acres to be banked for future parkland dedication credit, as you know, our ordinances allow that. It does require the parkland credits to be used from, development from within that same park quadrant, but that would be banked, and we would keep track of that, which does certainly have a value. The city would agree to trade certain island portions of the original 200-acre regional park that was donated, and I'll refer to these, if you can see the mouse, these three tracks here, one, two, and three, are sort of island portions of the original 200 acres. They worked very well when the full master plan was in effect, they don't as much now, and so they're really inaccessible in a lot of ways by the city. So, we propose to you a trade, essentially, whereby Chambers Bank would acquire these properties back in exchange for the same amount of acreage adjacent to our properties, so it basically would make both parcels a whole, so that would look more like this. We would maintain ownership of this overall property, and then Chambers would own this property. The purple line there represents a trail, a multi-use trail easement, we're still nailing that down, actually, Matt Mahalovich met with their group today on the ground to make sure where that easement is, but for the purposes of this proposal, we're simply agreeing to that, mutually agreeing of where that trail easement's located, and it's gonna be generally in this location. There are several other conditions, Chambers would prefer, and we've agreed, not to construct any trails across their property until we're ready to connect it up to other properties, and that would be part of the agreement. We would erect some signage along a common property line, which we also agree and would like to do, what's city and what's not. And then, finally, the confirmation of this purchase would need to occur no later than March 1st, 2014. It's why it's important for us, for a decision to be made, hopefully, tonight, and also to allow us, give us enough time to be able to pull deeds and formal contracts, property line adjustments, legal descriptions, all those types of things that makes a transaction like this together by that date. As is probably evidenced by our excitement in discussions, we're very interested in acquiring this important property for future generations, support from the Walton Family Foundation is obviously a pivotal element in doing so. We believe that the addition of this property as a public asset enhances the quality of life for residents for Northwest Arkansas by providing a unique venue for healthy outdoor recreation and wellness activities, in the form of nature trails for hiking and biking, for childhood to college education through environmental programs, and for preservation of open space and protection of watershed and natural resources. Together, those elements, we believe, are the goals of City Plan 2030 behind you here, and us particularly in assembling an enduring green network, will undoubtedly place Fayetteville and Northwest Arkansas in a place to continue to retain and attract talent to the region because of our quality of life reputation. And then, lastly, on the overall budget impact, we are requesting a budget adjustment, roughly $3.1 million, 1.5 would be from the Walton Family Foundation that we'd recognize as revenue, 1.5 would go to matched for the purchase, and then we're estimating around $100,000 for the publicly accessible trailhead that we would need to construct within 90 days of the actual acquisition, not 90 days of tonight's decision, but once we actually acquire the land. We're certainly proud to present this to you all, at the direction of the mayor, I think we've found a wonderful solution to something I know you probably have all individually been talked about by folks in the room that want to speak tonight, and we, of course, are recommending approval of this resolution.
Okay. What questions do we have for Chairman on this? Adella, I believe you...
Don't have any questions, I just want to say, I appreciate so much what Jeremy has done, and the mayor's encouraging him, and all these folks out here who are just really smart in seeing what we need to do for the city of Fayetteville, so I'm very excited, very excited.
I believe we have a presentation tonight from the Fayetteville National Heritage Association, do we not? Frank, do you have the presentation?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Good evening, Frank.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, hello. Thank you all for bringing us up on the agenda, that way these young men on the front row and Pete Hines will can I get to bed at a decent hour.
All right, Pete.
My name is Frank Sharp, and I'm here representing a group called Mount Kessler Greenways. And first, I do want to join Jeremy in thanking Chambers Bank for donating the 200 acres, and then the 48 acres, and being so cooperative with, during this transaction. And the city has been a joy to work with over these past years, Connie Edmondson and Allison Jumper, and a young fellow named Matt Mahalovich. We hiked that in 2006, before there were any trails, and the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board has hiked it a couple of times, the city attorney has hiked it on a bum knee years ago. And Greg and John, in the GIS department, have really helped us with maps, and it's a wonder what they can do with GIS. And Mayor Jordan has been a great help. In the fall of 2012, I went to him about this idea, see if I could get his blessing, and he said, "You've got it 110 percent." But then, we had to figure out how to get some extra money, other than city money, to do it, so the first thing I did is went to Bob Calk over here of Fayetteville Natural Heritage. As you all know, they were able to preserve 100 acres up on Mount Sequoia in the Brooks Humble property, and so Bob brought it to their board, and Fayetteville Natural Heritage chose to make that their number-one project for this year. And someone else that, excuse me, has been a huge help is Bill Stafford.
Bill, you're here somewhere.
Bill is with the Star Shopper, Stafford and Associates, and they did this professional-looking report that you all have, they did the layout, the type-setting, and the printing at no charge, because they were so interested in this deal, I think we started this probably a couple of years ago, and so, Bill and Bob, Bill and Joyce Stafford have just been invaluable help, and Barb and I worked on this a lot. Then, of course, the Ozark Offroad Cyclists, they built, I don't know, eight miles of trails up on the mountain, and they maintained those trails, and there was no cost at all to the city, so the city is getting, I don't know what it would cost to build those trails, it'd be a lot, and the Ozark Offroad Cyclists have done that. And, of course, the Walton Family Foundation, we would not be here, even heading into the Walton Family Foundation, and so we certainly want to thank them. But also, we've got all of these Mount Kessler Greenways advocates and supporters, and there's no way that each of these people are going to come up and speak to you all, so I would like to have a show of hands on how many people in this room support Mount Kessler. As Jeremy pointed out, we have about five major areas, benefits of Mount Kessler. The first is outdoor education, we call it an outdoor classroom, K through PhD, outdoor recreation, we have mountain biking, trail running, hiking, we have watershed protection, as you know, the summit divides the White River and Illinois River watersheds, the protection of natural sources, here you've got this huge wilderness in the middle of Fayetteville, five or 10 minutes from the center of Fayetteville. And then, also, economic benefits of Greenways. Out of design, in the appendix of that report, Out of Design has shown the economic benefits of Greenways, they say, "Greenways equal green bucks." So, I've got a few speakers here that are going to talk about these various areas. The first is Dana Smith, Dana? Here's Dana. Dana is the Sustainability Coordinator from the Fayetteville Public Schools, she's also on your Environmental Action Committee, on the Fayetteville Garden Coalition, and on the Board of Fayetteville Natural Heritage. Dana? Out of design, in the appendix of that report, Out of Design has shown the economic benefits of Greenways. They say, "Greenways equal green bucks." So I've got a few speakers here that are going to talk about these various areas. The first is Dana Smith. Dana, here's Dana. Dana is the Sustainability Coordinator from the Fayetteville Public Schools. She's also on your Environmental Action Committee, on the Fayetteville Garden Coalition, and on the Board of Fayetteville Natural Heritage. Dana?
Thank you, Frank, and thank you all for having us here. I feel fortunate to be one of the people who actually gets to speak tonight, but I'll keep it very brief. So as Frank said, I'm the Sustainability Coordinator for Fayetteville Public Schools. So education is extremely important, obviously, to me and to the, to the public school system. You see here on the presentation, what you're seeing are some photos of an AP Environmental Science class that visited Mount Kessler in the fall. And this was an opportunity for Fayetteville Public Schools to really explore Kessler as an outdoor classroom, and to think about some of those opportunities for education. And we were extremely happy with the, with that, that particular field trip, and also many of the other opportunities. It's just one of the many examples of how students can have hands-on, relevant learning experiences that reinforce the curriculum that's introduced in the classroom. So we are especially excited about Kessler as a living learning laboratory because it's just minutes from Fayetteville High School. So there's tremendous opportunity to have students out on that facility quite frequently, having that hands-on experience. It's also easily accessible from all of the schools in Fayetteville, not just in Fayetteville School District, but all of the schools in Fayetteville. So, so we think that there is a lot of opportunity for students of all ages in the classroom and in the green teams to use the, the space as an outdoor classroom.
Thank you, Dana. Our next speaker is Alan Edmondson. Alan got his undergraduate degree in urban-
Earth science.
-earth science, and he's now working on his masters in geography, but he works with Dr. Staley in the Tree Ring Laboratory. And Dr. Staley has found some very interesting trees up on Mount Kessler that Alan can tell you about.
Well, thank you, Frank, and good evening, and thank you, Mr. Mayor and City Council. I'm speaking tonight on behalf of Dr. David Staley, who is the Director of the U of A Tree Ring Laboratory, and he's also my graduate advisor. What is interesting to us at the Tree Ring Lab, Mount Kessler Preserve that you're considering tonight, is that it contains patches of original pre-settlement forests that were once common throughout the Ozarks prior to European settlement. These patches of old growth forests include jinkapin oak trees that are over 200 years old, and post-oak trees that are over 300 years old. The rugged woodlands on Mount Kessler are in fact an excellent example of the relatively undisturbed Ozark oak-hickory forest ecosystem. This land presents a unique, hands-on opportunity for students to study the ecosystem in which they live in its natural state. The Preserve also presents a wonderful research opportunity for the University of Arkansas in a wide variety of disciplines such as biology, geology, dendrochronology, and many other environmental sciences. And located minutes away from the University of Arkansas and the center of the city, it's, we could not pick a better place for it. So thank you very much, and I would urge you to pass this.
Thank you, Alan. Next, we have Guy Hedlund. Guy is with the, the Regional Office of the National Park Service and the Rivers and Trails Program, and he has agreed to help us develop this outdoor classroom. And we're going to have our first Steering Committee meeting on the 25th. Dana's going to be there, and we'll have a lot of people, because we're getting serious about doing this outdoor classroom. I mean, it's being used right now, but we need to get organized on it. So Guy?
Thank you. I'm with the National Park Service, but with a specific program called Rivers, Trails, and Conservation Assistance. And what we do is, we don't really focus on the national parks, as you might think of it, but we go out around communities throughout the country and help them with projects that they've identified that have a conservation or outdoor recreation benefit. And Frank and Bob Calk, the Fayetteville Natural Heritage Association, and Mount Kessler Greenways, applied with our program last summer. I met with them first about a year ago and walked aside and wasn't really sure how we could help, but they approached me with this idea of the outdoor classroom and laboratory. And as you mentioned, we're about to start off with a kickoff meeting next week for the Steering Committee. We project, within a year to two years, we'll have that completed. We'll be working with educators and experts in Fayetteville, and also through the region since it's kind of a regional destination. We probably will be providing meeting facilitation assistance, workshop facilitation, as well as more technical assistance, and bringing in hopefully more and more partners as we go through this project. Thank you.
Thank you, Guy. Next, we come to outdoor recreation, and we have Steve Snyder. Steve, where's Steve? Okay. Steve is the Regional Director of the International Mountain Biking Association, IMBA, and they're out of Boulder, Colorado, and they've got 3,500 members, 750 chapters in 30 countries. So they are really an international mountain biking group, and we're lucky to have Steve here as their Regional Representative.
I was going to wear that shirt, and it was going to say "Saved." Mr. Mayor, Council, I'm just going to read a couple paragraphs I wrote about Kessler. Couple facts about the city's investment. Looks like the, it's going to be maybe less than $4,000 per acre to acquire Mount Kessler. That's, that's pretty remarkable, considering this land is in the city limits and adjacent to a new regional park. That's pretty awesome. The multi-use 10 miles or so of trails on Mount Kessler have been already built, established, and are being maintained by Emmett Chapper Ozark Offroad Cyclists, with potential for connected trails to the regional park, as well as additions to the soft-surface trails in the future. At $3 to $5 per foot to build multi-use, soft-surface, sustainable trails, this is an incredible gift to the city and its community. Northwest Arkansas, as well as Arkansas as a whole, will continue to benefit from collaborative efforts initiated by mindful, passionate individuals and organizations willing to create a healthier lifestyle for all its citizens, today and for future generations. The synergy and vision is clear and obvious. Northwest Arkansas is putting emphasis on education, educating our communities and their children, the importance of wellness, nature, and outdoor recreational opportunities. This opportunity will help fight obesity, giving, giving families, especially children, another chance to put down the video games, get outside together, and experience one of our greatest gifts, nature. Municipalities such as the city of Fayetteville, as well as the Walton Family Foundation, are putting in strong work to provide these opportunities for our citizens, and we applaud you for doing that. As an IMBA representative, as well as being a passionate outdoor advocate, I urge you to vote yes to secure the natural scenic gift we call Mount Kessler. Thank you.
Steve, thank you for being such an ally. Next, we have John Coleman. John, you know, was the first Director of Sustainability for the city of Fayetteville, and he, he developed the city's first sustainability office. And he's now the Regional Office Manager of Veridian, and that's a sustainable building design firm. And he also is on the Board of FNHA. John?
All right. Thanks, Frank. I think Jeremy said it really well when he termed it just a legacy purchase for the community, for the mayor, for you as elected officials. It's an opportunity that does not come around very often, so obviously very excited about that. When I joined FNHA Board early last year, it was really with a focus on Kessler, and there was already just a tremendous amount of support. These guys at Ozark Offroad Cyclists have been out there developing these trails and just putting in a lot of, of work over the years. And so we were able to take advantage of that. We partnered with Ally Williams from Pacrat, Allison Jumper, the city of Fayetteville, and Dana Smith, and we developed this Kessler Trail Run. Where very quickly, we were able to raise several thousand dollars from donations and lo, from local businesses. Because of the support, they knew right off the bat it was a very easy sale to go in and ask them to donate to this cause. We got 150 runners to sign up within a month, and spread the word about Kessler, a lot of those first-time users. We had a really great day in the first weekend of November, there's a 10K and 20K, just to get people out on the mountain and take advantage of this asset. And then shortly after that, we started hearing rumblings about some of this discussion with Walton Family Foundation, and the city, and the involvement there, and just tremendous to see this, this come about. So thank you for just putting in the work, the legwork here. Thanks to the community for showing so much support. This is just amazing. I've already seen some of the council members taking pictures of the crowd, which you know that means it's a pretty large event, so we're really excited about it. And, and thank you very much. And thanks especially to Frank Sharp organizing everyone, and, and just allowing access up there through his property is, is tremendous. Thanks, Frank.
About a year ago, we put a trail log up to just see how many people we have, and we asked them to put their zip codes down so we could see how many people came from out of Fayetteville, and how many had a University of Arkansas affiliation, and then we asked whether they were a hiker, or biker, or runner, or other. And even though the, the mountain bikers built the trail, 65% of our users are hikers. And representing the hikers is Mike LaMaster. Mike is the President of the Ozark Highlands Trail Association, and Mike has been out there after the 2009 ice storm. He had out to chainsaws, you couldn't even find the trails. So Mike, he may be president, he uses a chainsaw instead of a gavel.
Thank you, Frank. Mayor Jordan, members of the City Council. It's a pleasure to be here. I represent over 300 members of the Ozark Highlands Trail Association. Most of our members live or reside in Northwest Arkansas. The Ozark Highlands Trail, for those of you who aren't familiar, is currently 185 miles in length, and it begins at Lake Fort Smith State Park, goes east over to the Buffalo River. Eventually, it will, it will conclude around Lake, around the city of Norfolk, Arkansas, and it will link with the Ozark Trail in Missouri, whereupon a hiker or backpacker could conceivably start at Lake Fort Smith here in about 10 years, hike all the way to St. Louis. I can visualize, and I hope, I think this group can also, a trail in the future from Mount Kessler to Lake Fort Smith, where you could drive out to Kessler Park, take your backpack, hike down to Lake Fort Smith, and then all the way to St. Louis. It'd be, and, and if you've got a couple of months. We, we enjoy hiking, my group, and I know, I think I speak for the Scouts, I have two boys that were in Scouts growing up. That's where I got acquainted with, with hiking. We enjoy hiking on remote, primitive, natural trails, and, and do so at every opportunity. However, the nearest trailhead on the OHT requires about an hour of driving. So I, like many others in the hiking community, have turned Mount Kessler for the convenience and its natural feel. In fact, Frank alluded there about the survey that was done out there during, on their trail log, 65% of the users were hikers. And, you know, you can hike till you've got one foot in the grave. It really is, it's, it's good exercise, and you'd be surprised at the age of people that I hike with on the, on the Ozark Highlands Trail. Mr. Mayor, I and my organization stand ready to help the city in any way, building the trail, maintaining that trail, and more importantly, enjoying the trail. I urge you, Mr. Mayor, and this council, to appropriate the matching funds from Walmart, from Walton Grant, and make this the new jewel in Fayetteville's crown a reality. Your action will create, and I've heard this twice already tonight, your action will create a spectacular legacy for the city. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mike. As we mentioned, watershed protection, I mean, anytime you can leave woods and watershed, it cuts down your treatment costs. And John Pennington is the Executive Director of the Beaver Watershed Alliance, and John will tell you something about watershed.
Thank you, Frank. Mayor, members of the council, Mount Kessler is a potential example of what would be beneficial for the entire watershed. For Beaver Lake, land conservation is the number-one best protection measure long-term. And according to the watershed protection strategy that we have, we also carried out a West Fork Opportunity Assessment this fall, and it's still ongoing, and Kessler was recognized as an important place that should be protected. The residents that live in Fayetteville on Town Branch, for years, y'all are aware of this, have experienced flooding issues, and part of that's due to the water, as it, as it drains off the land with more concrete and development, sometimes runoff can increase and floodwaters can grow. And so conserving this land in this particular watershed will have a special, significant effect on your local citizens and their quality of life, as well as the residents of Northwest Arkansas. Beaver Lake watershed is about 70% forest cover. It's been declining a little bit through time. Within Town Branch, in that watershed, the amount of forest canopy has gone from above 50% to below 50%. And so the trend is that we're losing some of our green space as we go, go through time, and it's so very, very important to help protect our water quality for everybody that drinks from Beaver Lake. And so not only is it good for the White River watershed, but it's also good for the Illinois River watershed, as Kessler, as been noted, serves as headwaters for, for two resources in our area. And so the Beaver Watershed Alliance is very much in support of, of the concept of the city taking up the Walton Family Foundation on this grant, and establishing a greater legacy for Fayetteville and for the Northwest Arkansas region. And I just, I don't know what else y'all could do that, that could further the gap anymore and make this area more livable and more attractive than almost anywhere else in the state. And so I, I think it's just going to be very beneficial for you all. Very proud of all the work everybody's put, put forward, and hope, hope that you do take up on that offer. Thank you very much.
Thank you, John. Our next is Lauren Ray. She's the Education Outreach Coordinator for the Illinois River Watershed Partnership.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council Members. I just wanted to emphasize this evening that watershed education can be fun, and Mount Kessler is just the ideal venue for facilitating watershed education programs. In fact, the IRWP hosted its first Conservation Leadership Summit for junior high and high school students in early January. We had six area schools that attended, one of which was Haas Hall Academy here in Fayetteville. I was asked to emphasize that. Anyway, we took these students and teachers to several sites in the Illinois River watershed, one of which was Mount Kessler, and we used geocaching as a tool for educating about different watershed issues. And of course, Mount Kessler being the dividing line between two watersheds, it was just perfect, and students had a great time. And anyway, I, on behalf of the IRWP, I just wanted to say that we'll be thrilled to host more programs at Mount Kessler for the future, and to keep watersheds fun and exciting for Northwest Arkansas for years to come. So thank you all so much.
Have you been able to find, find Stan Johnson's picture?
We just had a little malfunction over there.
A malfunction?
The power got turned off.
Our, our next speaker is Stan Johnson. Stan is a businessman. He's the President of Johnson Mechanicals. He is our, he is a founding member of OORC, and he's our neighbor to the north on Washington Mountain, and his family has several hundred acres there. And how many miles of trails on your place?
About four and a half.
About four and a half miles of trails, and they're connected. Stan rides over from Washington Mountain to Kessler Mountain. And anyway, Stan is going to talk about the, yeah, there's Stan's picture right there. You see, he's a grandpa in addition to being all the other things. Stan?
Well, I'm a Fayetteville native by the grace of God, and a lifelong resident because I've had the good sense to stay here. Also, one of those 57-year-old kids that never forgot how much fun it was to ride a bike. Frank asked me to speak from a economic benefit perspective tonight, and also from a business perspective. I am a business owner here in Fayetteville. Our business pays local and state sales tax on an excess of $3 million in material every year, and we also have a payroll of about 1.2 million, so, so we have a positive economic benefit on the local economies, and, and as a business owner, I'm 100% in favor of spending city money in this, in this regard. And my perspective from the economic benefit is from a mountain bike destination. Fayetteville and Northwest Arkansas is becoming a mountain bike destination, and, and I've been a mountain bike tourist, been to, all the way from Oregon to North Carolina on trips, and every time I, I went, I left there with a smile and a lot less money in my pocket. So that's how that works. And like Frank said, I am a neighboring landowner, and my family owns property that, that borders the South Pass property, and it's about time my side of town got some love. So, thanks. So, thanks.
Thank you, Stan. Our next speaker is Misty Murphy. Misty is the Trails Coordinator for the Northwest Arkansas Council.
Thank you, Frank. Well, I'm really happy to be here to talk about Mount Kessler, because in addition to trying to advocate for people to recognize the economic benefits of trails, I'm also a passionate mountain biker, and Mount Kessler was one of my first mountain bike rides. So, while it was rather bumpy, it's one of my favorite trails. There's nothing else quite like it in northwest Arkansas. So, we're really lucky to have that. And the economic potential of this trail is multiplied by its proximity to what will be the regional park, obviously, and connected, it will be connected to a network of paved trails with the Razorback Greenway. So, that just heightens its appeal from an economic standpoint. We can look at some numbers. We don't have many locally yet. That's something that we're working on. We're trying to set up an annual study, and we'll have a mechanism, hopefully in the future, to measure the success of trails like Mount Kessler. But what we do have right now, we can look at national trends and know that those are, they're happening here in northwest Arkansas as well. One from 2011 showed that outdoor activities contributed $646 billion in direct consumer spending in the United States. And that's pretty big. If we take that on a lower scale, we can look at Jackson Hole, Wyoming. They have a similar trail system to Mount Kessler and some of the other mountain bike trails that we have around here. And they estimate that those had an impact of $18 million in 2011. And what was good about that is a lot of those come from people coming into town. So, you're not using, taxing a lot of your local residents. That's money that you're bringing in from elsewhere. And that was $1 million in state and local tax revenue. If we want to look at Alabama, they have a mountain bike system, Coldwater Mountain Bike Trail System in northwest Alabama. And it's a newer system, but their projections show that on 50,000 users, it would have a total economic impact of 1.8 million dollars. And if you took that to 150,000 users, it would have a 5.4 million dollar impact. So, those are some pretty big numbers. I think trails like Mount Kessler are a really good investment, because in addition to their economic impact, they're also very cost-effective. We were talking about groups like the ORC that come in, and they do a lot of the work for the city. And so it's, you get more bang for your buck that way. But I think, and the council believes, that the purchase of Mount Kessler would have a positive impact on the city and the region. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Misty. Next, we have Terry Lane. Terry grew up on Mount Kessler on a farm, and when she was a little girl, she and her sister and my kids were in Bethel Grove 4H, and they showed sheep and heifers. But she's a big girl now. And so she is the executive director of the Northwest Arkansas Land Trust. And she's also on the Board of Fayetteville Natural Heritage.
Good evening. I'm more or less bringing up the rear, I think, next to the last. I just wanted to say that on behalf of the land trust, that, you know, the land trust was formed by community leaders, much like we have in this room tonight, who recognize that Fayetteville is going to grow, northwest Arkansas is going to grow, we're going to keep growing. But we need to grow mindfully. And I know that this administration certainly, and the rest of the people in this room, recognize that land conservation is more than a special interest, environmental issue, wouldn't that be nice? And all of the speakers before me have made the point that land conservation is actually at the heart and soul of all of the other issues that matter, such as health and wellness and the economy, and it's all been said. So, the last thing that I wanted to say was just that I think it's important that, just like we make decisions for and plan for places that we want to develop, what we can develop, we also need to plan for and invest in places that shouldn't be developed. And Mount Kessler is one of those places. So, on behalf of the land trust, and also I've served on the Environmental Action Committee for several years until just recently, and did want to mention the Community Wildlife Habitat Project. I'm still the volunteer coordinator for that, that on behalf of wildlife, this is also a critical place to conserve. So, I encourage you to make the purchase and again, set the legacy for future generations. Thank you.
Thank you, Terry. She learned her work ethic at Bethel Grove 4H Club. Really did, those kids. They were the New York Yankees of 4H Clubs. Bob Calk is going to finish our presentation, and Bob has just been so much help in all of FNHA for the last eight years. Bob?
If I can remember to go the right way, there we go. Whoops. All right, now I got it. Mount Kessler is on the dividing line, it's on the red star on this chart, it's on the dividing line between two EPA eco-regions. And because of this, you would expect it to have fairly high diversity, and we do think it does. It was also the only site in northwest Arkansas that was mentioned in the 1926 Naturalist Guides to the Americas. And what this guide talked about was that Mount Kessler was one of these sites that was positioned perfectly to support both northern and southern biota. And one example that we all see is the sugar maple. It's a northern tree. Every winter, the side of Mount Kessler turns bright red from the sugar maples that are out there. On a smaller scale, Doug James lived up on Kessler for a number of years, and Doug noticed in his yard that some years he had birds that bred it in the north that were nesting in his yard, and other years he had birds that were bred it in the south that were nesting in his yard. So, it really is on a dividing line. FNHA, right now, is trying to arrange for a rapid terrestrial ecological assessment of the site by a botanist from the Natural Heritage Commission. And this study would go from like April to October, and would actually set the baseline for what exists up there today as a natural area, and would begin the development of a management plan for the area as a natural area. Went the right direction. This slide just shows you some of the things you can see on Mount Kessler if you go slow and walk and take the time to look around. The top picture, all of these pictures were taken by Joe Neal. The top picture is a spotted salamander. It lives in hardwood forests and needs vernal pools to breed. The one on the going clockwise, the next one is the spring paper. It's about an inch, inch and a half in size. And we've had a couple of warm days now, and so if you were up on Kessler this evening, you might hear them singing up there. They're quite loud. I think the picture that's the most amazing is the one on the bottom left, that shows a rock formation up there with fossils in it. And the fossils are those that you would find in the bottom of the sea, which suggests and actually proves the point that this whole area, many, many years ago, was under the ocean. These are all things that were fun to get out there and see. Jeremy mentioned that the financing plan for this really had three parts, and FNHA was one of those parts. FNHA will take the lead in working with Kessler advocates to raise $300,000 of community support towards this park. We will once again be asking for a conservation easement, like we have in the past, on the properties that we've been involved with. And this time, in the conservation easement, we would like language that talks about managing the natural area, and we would like to involve groups in this management, like the Ozark Offroad Cyclists, FNHA, the Local Audubon Chapter, the Northwest Arkansas Land Trust, and one or two university scientists, so that we make sure that what we do, we get right. Some examples of what I was thinking about as a management plan would be like Alan was up here talking earlier, and he was talking about having set up some permanent research sites on the mountain for future students to work on. Well, any trail building we would do up there, we would like to make sure that those sites remain intact. Another example might be that in the biological assessment that's done, there may be a recommendation to do some restoration work on the post oak glades that are up there. And this restoration work is the kind of thing that can be done jointly with a volunteer group like FNHA, with the park staff. The last thing I want to mention on this slide is that if you vote to advance this tonight, the fundraising will start immediately. I understand that, or I hope that we have put together some donation forms, and that Dana Smith, John Coleman, and Terry Lane, the other FNHA people that are speaking, will hand them out to people as you leave this evening. This slide is a great summary that was provided to us by a University of Arkansas student who visited Kessler with her ecological assessment class. What the speakers tonight have tried to do is to demonstrate to you that the community is already obtaining value from the Kessler property. And that we ask you to accept the Walton Family Foundation grant, the FNHA pledge, and get on with the business of buying the land. Now, finally, regardless of what you do tonight, we would not be here tonight without the efforts of Frank Sharp. And I would like you to join me in thanking Frank.
I mean, Stan Johnson, and I've enjoyed those mountains for many, many, many years, 70 years in my case, but, you know, it's these kids' turn, and your action tonight will ensure that generations of kids, and big kids, will enjoy it for many, many years to come. Thank you all. What questions do we have in the council? Mark?
I think that we've heard good arguments to support this, and we've certainly received a lot of information. And I would like to move that we go ahead and move forward and accept this resolution by unanimous consent.
May I?
Yes.
I certainly support that, but I wonder if the council might humor me in an experiment I've done as a wilderness leader a few times. It'd only take a few minutes. Is that okay before we vote?
I've done this with many groups. I first did this years ago as part of a mentorship training. So, if you're super serious about this, it may strike you as a little loopy in the beginning, but please humor me. I think it will be inspiring. If you would, please, close your eyes. If that makes you uncomfortable, just look down. Imagine that you are as relaxed as you could ever be. You're content. You feel peaceful. Hold that, and then expand your thoughts to imagine where you are, the place you're in. What does it look like? How does it feel? What are the sensations you experience? Fill in all those details about this place and how it allows you to be so relaxed. Now, without opening your eyes or looking up, raise your hand if you're outside. Be honest, we all know the point I'm getting at. Now, look up. I first did that, it was done to me, I guess, with mentors who work with inner-city kids. And they described the same experience we all just had. Everyone raises their hand. When I was a Boy Scout leader, I did that with troops from all backgrounds, all ages. It's the same thing every time. It doesn't matter how much money you made or your parents made, doesn't matter what country you're from, it doesn't matter if you are a country boy or a modern woman, it's the same thing. Something deep in our bones, no, something deep in our soul, it's deeper than our bones, draws us to the outdoors. I think that's reason enough to vote for it.
What other comments do we have in the council?
Well, I think we need to recognize what a great show of community that this room really is. This is amazing for these citizens to come here. I want to thank the staff publicly. I think this is something they should be very proud of. I think this was very difficult and complicated to put together. These kind of things just don't happen. It happens because of a sense of partnership and togetherness that are things that exist in this city. So, thank you very much for those that were involved in this. I want to again thank Mr. Sharp for this and so many other reasons. Thank you, sir. I want to thank publicly the Walton Family Foundation. They continue to be great friends of the region. And I think, I tried to think back on what this meant, and I thought, you know, 100 years from now, if somebody's looking back at the timeline of the city of Fayetteville, and they look at the important dates on it, there'll be several dates, but I do think one of those dates will be 1871, the year the University of Arkansas opened. I think another date will be 1992, when the Walton Arts Center opened. Both of those things transformed the city and energized its future. And I think 2014 will be on that timeline, which was when the citizens of Fayetteville used their money to purchase this beautiful piece of property. And this land, together with the upcoming regional park, that was also approved by the voters of this great city, will change the city and the region forever. I mean, it's truly that important of a moment in time. And I'm honored to be a part of it and excited to support it.
Okay. What other comments do we have? Sarah?
I would just like to say thank you to the mayor and this council, and the administration, and all of our staff, as well as our predecessors, who have made very good financial decisions that have put us in the position of being able to purchase this gem for the enjoyment of future generations. And I hope we keep that in mind as we move forward, that that's why we have reserves, so that we can do these really important things when they come up. You know, I'd hate to have to pass up the opportunity of a lifetime like this. So, thank you.
What other final comments do we have in the council before we vote?
Just wanted to just like to say thank you to the public. It's been really wonderful to hear from you. I owe some of you an email response. I've read them all, but haven't responded to all of them. But we're up here every week, voting and making decisions and doing the best we can for our city that we love so much. But when you get involved, and you write us, and call us, and email us, I love that part of this job. And so thank you all for your input and your very positive help in making this decision. Thank you for being here with us all tonight.
Any other comments? Okay, I want to say something. You knew I would. There's a few moments in time that you get to do something historic. And there is a few moments in your life that you feel like that you've really done something great and accomplished something. Tonight is one of those nights for this city. Now, this wouldn't have happened without Frank Sharp. Now, Frank took me up there. Well, I knew about that. I had hiked it when I was younger. Now, I'm, you know, some folks say hiking Mount Kessler and going on to St. Louis would be the hike of a lifetime. It would take me a lifetime to walk that far. But I do hike, I do walk. And he took me up there in 2001 or 2002, and we walked that, and he showed me the significance of preserving that area. And that was sort of a passion of mine, something I always wanted to do. You know, it came along, when I came into office, you know, you run on all these platforms, and you think you're going to do such great things, and then you're sitting in the middle of a recession, and you're just trying to figure out how to keep everything going. And, but I always had in the back of my mind, Mount Kessler, preserving that piece of property. Chief of Staff can tell you that. We had some long conversations about that. And there is a couple of folks also, Connie's done a great job, staff's done a great job, Allison Chalmers done a great job, Walton Family Foundation, FNHA, Ozark Cyclists. I could just go on, the University of Arkansas Federal Public Schools, it's all been said. But when I came into office, we thought, okay, we have the 200-acre park, but we really didn't even have that then. We had to go back, it was in, and we negotiated with the bank. Many of you voted to do that. We went back and got the 200 acres, and I told the chief of staff, he said, "Well, this is a great accomplishment." I said, "Yeah, but it's not quite enough. I really would like to preserve Mount Kessler." So, we couldn't find the money to do that. And Frank came in, again. And Frank came in, again. And Frank stayed after me. And I agreed with Frank, I just didn't have any money to do it with, but I, I certainly want to thank him for keeping this in my mind and in my heart. Thank you, Frank, for doing that. I also want to thank Jeremy Pate and Don Mar for working to get, make this a reality. And what I see with this purchase of 376 acres that will never, ever be touched again, in my mind's eye, if this city lasts a thousand years or 10,000 years, I see our children and our children's children walking that trail. And mind you, other than probably Frank, nobody's going to remember anybody's name. But you know what? They're going to look out over that, and they're going to say, "I really appreciate city leadership that preserved this beautiful place for us." Not only will that endure forever, the people in this city, this council will endure forever just because of this decision tonight. And I am humbled, and I am glad to be here and thankful to be not only the mayor of this city, but to be a citizen of this city at this point in time. Thank you all. All right. Sandra?
I have a motion, but I did not hear a second.
Oh, I'm sure we'll get one. Sandra, would you please call the row?
Hotmire?
Yes.
Adam?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes.
Kenyon?
Yes.
Teddy?
Yes.
Tannet?
Yes.
All right. Thank you all. Okay. Is that meeting adjourned?
You're supposed to go out on a high note, right? You're supposed to, you're supposed to just, you're supposed to just walk out of the room. It's like a really good comedian, you just leave. It takes a little while there, but...
Good to see you. Thank you for being here. They're so cute.
Good stuff.
Hi, guys. Oh, look at them, they're little ones. They're so cute.
Yeah, cute.
Yep.
Thank you for being here, guys.
Yeah, they should come and go.
Hi, Professor. Glad you were here.
Well? Does anyone need a break? Or?
Anyone work the front?
Thank God.
Huh?
Thank God.
Let's take a few minutes. Let's take a few minutes.
I can't make Thursday. I've got to open up my kids, but I told them we're going to try to send them out. All right. I want mobile lending.
Yep. I'm with you. What restaurant?
It was what Thames East is now. Back in the day, it was called Betty Hillings. We bought it through, uh, one of those places.
I don't remember who we bought it from.
My brother-in-law. Remember Coy's? He was manager, Coy.
I mean, I don't know if he had, but I... So, uh... I don't know.
I guess I'd have put past all this, huh?
Hit that real hard, I think it'll come out. I know.
All right. Yeah.
Yes, they do. Yes, they absolutely do.
I'm going to call the city council meeting back to order. On the agenda number two, Carsher North American Incorporated Resolution to Approve and Certified Participation of Carsher North American Incorporated in the Arkansas Tax Back Program and to Agree to Authorize DFNA to Refund City Sales Tax Back to Carsher North America Incorporated. Jeremy, I believe you have this?
Yes. City Fayetteville was contacted by our economic development partners, Chung Tan and Steve Clark, seeking endorsement for Carsher North America Incorporated to participate in the State of Arkansas Tax Back Program. Carsher North America is a U.S. company owned by Carsher of Germany, with its U.S. corporate office located in Inglewood, Colorado. The company is known for high-pressure cleaners and window vacuum cleaners primarily. During an expansion phase in the last couple of years, Carsher carefully considered many sites and chose to purchase its first facility in the U.S. when it acquired the 661,500-square-foot building from Hannes Candles on Armstrong Road in May of 2012. The business is currently utilizing about half of that, around 300,000 square feet, as a warehousing and distribution center for Carsher products, and they invested about $10 million in that facility. With that move, they brought about 60 jobs, new jobs, from Springdale actually to Fayetteville to the purchased property, and they've hired 30 more since the time that they expanded into that facility. With this proposal, Carsher is again requesting the City of Fayetteville's endorsement of this tax-back program, to participate in the tax-back program. They are committed to creating nine new jobs, paying an average hourly wage of $11.15 for a total annual payroll of a little over $208,000. In addition, they will be invested about $280,000 on renovating the existing building and another $200,000 on equipment. Those two, those two numbers, the 280,000 and 200, really would be the maximum investment within potential equipment and things of that nature that they could potentially see sales tax back on that, related to this program. Carsher's plans are to continue to grow the company in the future, and we feel like that's one of the most important components of this. We feel like there's a track record here of this company moving into the city, bringing new workers, new jobs, and we hope to help them in this way to expand the, to expand that ability. Carsher is looking to carry out its expansion plan into the rest of the building in the near future, and we hope generate additional economic activity for the City of Fayetteville. I know that Chung Tan is available here, as are others related to this project, and I'd ask for them to make a few comments and hopefully answering the questions that was, that were brought up at the council agenda session.
Good evening, Mayor and the City Council. I'm Chung Tan with the Fayetteville Chamber. I am very pleased this evening to bring with you Justin Smith with the Arkansas Economic Development Commission and Ed Taylor. He is the plant manager for Carsher North America. Carsher North America actually moved from Fayette, from Springdale to Fayetteville about two years ago, but they decided to expand due to consolidation of their own operations in the United States. We are very happy, thanks to the work of Mr. Taylor. He was charged to look for possible places to go, possible buildings to buy, and he decided on Fayetteville. He was definitely an advocate for the city of Fayetteville, talking to his corporate office, to his senior management, and then did all that. And then we got, we got pulled in as soon as they were in that conversation, and we were excited. We were part of that, part of that team to help them to move from Fayette, to move from Springdale to Fayetteville. And right now, since then, they have not only bought the building, they have done some investment 100% on their own without coming to the city or coming to the state for any support or incentive. But this time, this is the intermediate phase that they have come to us, asking for that sales tax refund program for, and since they put in the application, they have actually did a change in it and actually increased the amount, so meaning that instead of $480,000 worth of investment, they're going to do more of that. Instead of nine positions, they're actually going to increase to 11 as of right now. They're, just only last week, he was very busy doing the interviews. So, for various reasons, we recommend the city council members to vote a yes, to pass this request, and one of the reasons is because this is about job creation. This is about bringing new jobs to the city of Fayetteville, and it's not a small number. It is, as of right now, 100, and it could be more in the future. This is about enhancing tax base for the city of Fayetteville, because they bought the building, they are now paying property taxes, and because they are hiring about 100 people, these people then now can go out and buy cars, they can buy homes, or they can eat at our local restaurants or shop at our retail stores. So all this means sales tax, property tax, to the city of Fayetteville. There is also the optimism about their plans for the future, because they do not stop right here. They have a lot of other future plans, and I'm going to let Mr. Taylor talk a little bit about that. It is about Fayetteville, about the image that, you know, we have international company that have decided to make their first purchase in the city of Fayetteville. They have plans all over the United States. And so this favored well for the city, because it shows to the other companies, to other companies that we are trying to attract, that if we could get a company from Germany to buy the building in Fayetteville, we could get any company from all around the world to invest in the city of Fayetteville. That that is that trust, that that is that faith that we will do the right thing for them, because when they come here, they become a Fayetteville company. And then also, by them buying the 661,000-square-foot building in the Commerce District, in effect, they have actually what we call up-value, up-value the Commerce District, because with all these things that is happening, we have another company that is also going to the Commerce District. It sends another message to the outside that our... It sends another message to the outside, uh, that our, our, um, other than retail sector, our manufacturing sector, our wholesaling distribution sector, all that is doing good, and they will do well, um, in the Commerce District. Um, and last but not least is about the workforce development. This company, they are not only hiring from the existing workforce pool, they are also providing training. So, in effect, they are spending their money, uh, training, um, citizens of Fayetteville with new skill sets that make them more marketable, more employable, and this is also another upgrade of our, um, community from the standpoint when other people are looking into our city. They always look at workforce. Can we get the skill sets that we need? So, we have companies like Carsher that is doing all this and more. So, right now, I'm going to let, um, Mr. Smith to talk about the program, and then later on, uh, Mr. Taylor to talk about what they have plans, uh, for their company in Fayetteville.
Thank you, Chung, and I'll be really brief. Uh, what I'm gonna do on behalf of the Arkansas Economic Development Commission is just give you an overview of the tax-back program and why we use it and kinda how we use it. Um, and it, the tax-back program is part of our Consolidated, Consolidated Incentive Act of two thousand and three. Um, it's one of our, what we call statutory incentives. Any eligible business can apply, um, if they meet the thresholds. Uh, and when I say eligible, I'm talking about manufacturing, distribution centers, and our other cut categories that we've deemed as targeted sectors. I could go into those if you want. Software companies, office sector companies, any company that has a corporate headquarters here in Arkansas. But Carsher does fall within the eligible businesses category. It's a, it's an incentive, just like our other incentives, we use to help retain businesses here in Arkansas. We use it to help expanding industries here in Arkansas. Uh, we use it to help attract industries here to the state and to encourage, uh, industries, uh, to invest here in Arkansas. Um, what the program is, it is a sales and use tax refund on the purchase of building materials, modernization of the plant, expansion of the plant. Uh, as we talked about earlier, uh, the totals on Carsher's application was four hundred and eighty thousand dollars worth of expansion. Um, two hundred thousand of that in new equipment. Two hundred and eighty thousand of that, uh, was improvement to their existing facility, uh, in Fayetteville. Um, there's a few things that we won't authorize, uh, the refund for, and in this case, uh, doesn't apply to Carsher. I mean, it has to be a true expansion. You can't apply for, if you're using the money for routine operating expenditures or purchase of replacement items, uh, vehicles, uh, repair and maintenance that aren't directly related to the expansion. Uh, thresholds for the investment, the company has to invest at least a hundred thousand dollars, uh, in the expansion, in the modernization, in the new equipment, and Carsher has, uh, surpassed that with the four hundred and eighty thousand dollars. Um, on top of, we, we consider the tax-back program an investment incentive, but on top of that, if you, if you apply for the tax-back program, you also have to create jobs, which is called our Advantage Arkansas program, uh, to be eligible to get the tax-back program, and Carsher has done that. Uh, the thresholds for that program, just real briefly, uh, in, in Washington County, which is a tier-one county, Carsher has to create at least a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars worth of new payroll, annual full-time payroll, um, and also meet a ten dollar and eighty-six cent average wage requirement in which they, uh, as the state considers have met, uh, that threshold. Um, so we tie the program to job creation as well. Um, just a couple of quick notes on the program. They must incur all the project costs within four years of, of the Economic Development Commission approving, uh, Carsher of the incentive. Um, and all claims for the sales and use tax refund must be filed within three years of, of the date of the qualified purchases, the four hundred and eighty thousand dollars. Um, the purpose of the resolution here before you today is to, one, uh, see about approving Carsher's participation in the program from the city perspective of the sales and, uh, use tax refund. Um, and to specify the municipality, in this case, the City of Fayetteville, to authorize the Department of Finance and Administration to refund those sales and use tax dollars, uh, at the local level. Um, I could mention a few of the numbers on, on the application. Um, uh, it was verified earlier. Um, new jobs created, uh, that was mentioned on the application was nine, and average wage of the new workers, eleven dollars and fifteen cents an hour for a total payroll of two hundred and eight thousand and seven hundred and twenty-eight dollars. And I believe we have learned since then, uh, from the plant manager, Mr., uh, Mr. Ed Taylor, who will speak here in just a second, that those numbers may have increased a little, uh, which Chung had mentioned. Uh, but that does not affect, uh, the, the tax-back program. They listed four hundred and eighty thousand dollars on there, and, and that would be the max that they could claim. Um, what, what Chung was mentioning, the increase in the jobs is just an added benefit. Um, I'm gonna let, uh, the plant manager speak, but if, if you all have any questions for me, I'd be glad to try to answer them, uh, either now or after he's done. Thank you.
Good evening. Thanks for having me. I'm a little bit nervous. This is the first time I've done this, so... Um, so, I talked a little about who Carsher is. Um, we're one of the world's leading producers of floor cleaning equipment and pressure washers. Um, I've been with the company for eleven years. Uh, I started in Springdale. We started in Springdale at a forty thousand square-foot building when I started in two thousand and three. Two thousand and five, we moved into a hundred and thirty thousand square-foot building in Monitor Road. In two thousand and eleven, I got a call from my boss in Denver saying, "I need you to look for a building." Um, he goes, "I need you to look for about two hundred and seventy-five thousand square feet." So, we looked in Rogers, we looked everywhere. I looked in Tulsa, Kansas City, um, you know, different Knoxville, Tennessee, different places, but then we did a geocentric study of our, our business and where is our best needs to fit our customers, our current customer base. And we have facilities in Portland, Oregon, cities in Blackwood, our facilities in Blackwood, New Jersey. So, our goal is to become a three distribution center, with Fayetteville being our central distribution center. But when we did that study, the ideal place for us to be was right above Branson, Missouri. So, when we said, "Why would we spend money to move to Branson, Missouri and lose our workforce?" That's when we really started looking into this area a lot more. Um, we found the Hannes Building, six hundred and sixty-one thousand square feet, a lot more than what we needed. We sent that to our, uh, board in Germany, and within two weeks, they had someone over here inspecting the building and saying, "Purchase the property," even though we didn't need to that much of a building at that time. We moved into the building July of two thousand and twelve. We bought the building for eleven and a half million dollars. We did one point seven million dollars worth of renovations to the building and equipment, uh, racking, equipment, office furniture, cubicles, everything like that, um, redoing the front of the building. Um, so, we moved in in July of two thousand and twelve, three days after, or two thousand and thirteen. Three days after we moved in, I called my boss and said, "I need more space." So, we're gonna be continuing to grow. Um, we are looking to be, our twenty-twenty vision for Carsher North America is to be a five hundred million dollar a year company just in Carsher North America. Um, with that, about eighty percent of that was shipped out of our Fayetteville facility. Um, so that's a pretty good revenue stream coming into the Fayetteville or going out of the Fayetteville area. Um, Carsher is a family-owned company. We're not publicly traded. We're owned by the brother and sister of the founders of the organization. Um, it was founded eighty years ago. Um, globally, we have over ten thousand employees, um, in several different countries. Um, and, you know, like was mentioned in the application, this is the first building that Carsher has committed to buying within North America. As I mentioned, our Blackwood facility, we're getting ready to move into a new facility in that building, or, in eleven days, we're getting ready to move into a new facility. They did not purchase that building. They only leased it. Um, because they don't know what the market is gonna be there, but they're confident for the market here. Um, a couple of other things, I mean, just to let you know about Carsher. We do, obviously, it's a marketing tool, but we do a lot of projects. As far as community projects, we're very community-oriented. Um, we're given a new initiative now to go out and be even more clean. Uh, we are a cleaning company and more green. Um, some of the projects we have done, you might have seen on TV, we do, um, big, huge cleaning projects. We did cleaning of Statue of Liberty. Did cleaning of Mount Rushmore, cleaning of the, um, Space Needle in Seattle, the church of, uh, the Christ Church in Brazil, the Forbidden City in China, and these are all projects that we do free of charge. We do the, we provide the personnel, the equipment, and do all the cleaning. That's just some of the things, obviously, it's a marketing tool as well, but it is some of the things we do for, for, um, the communities. And we just did a huge project. It's called Carshermie in Detroit, Michigan, where they went in and let the community decide what areas they wanted cleaned, and we went and cleaned, cleaned those buildings and cleaned those areas. If you have any questions for me, I'd be glad to answer them.
Alright. What questions do we have in council? Sure.
Um, I guess I'd just like to say, I'm really happy that the company's purchased the facility in Fayetteville and is looking to expand your workforce. But, um, I'm just gonna question why a company with over two point eight trillion dollars in annual revenue needs a handout from the citizens of Fayetteville?
Not sure where you got the two point eight trillion from.
Um, it...
We just hit the two billion mark this year worldwide.
Okay, is that from... Is compare.com CEO data?
Yeah, I don't know where that data come from.
Am it still two billion dollars?
It's two billion dollar a year worldwide.
Okay.
Um, we're not looking for a handout, obviously. Everything that we get back will be reinvested into the company, uh, into the, the, the facility. One of the things I did mention that I had in my notes to talk about, we have another four hundred thousand dollars that we're investing this year into the building. So, anything that we get back, you know, from this will be reinvested in the building. One of the big thing, one of our biggest investments that we're doing, and it's kind of a company policy for this year, we're really investing in our people. Um, as Chung mentioned, we're setting up a training center. We'll be providing training for employees. We're developing mentoring programs for the employees so that they can go from one skill set to another skill set. Um, we're not asking for a handout. It's just, you know, whatever we get back helps us invest more into the, our people mainly. And, uh, but one of, one of the big things that we're investing in this year, and you don't have that too much in this area, is we're investing almost two hundred thousand dollars in a chiller system that would cool our warehouse. If you work in a warehouse environment, in Springdale, our warehouse would get up to a hundred and twenty-eight degrees during the summer for employees working. Um, this chiller system will allow the warehouse to stay at between eighty and eighty-five degrees, which is a, a very comfortable level for someone to be working and standing on their feet all day.
Mark?
Mr. Taylor, I for one, uh, really appreciate the work that you're doing to develop the economic basis in our industrial areas. Um, when I look at this, I do not see it as a handout. I see it as an investment, and a very, uh, wise investment. And again, to know that you all have purchased the property, to know that you're investing in training, to know that you're making jobs to take people out of the unemployed workforce, to know that, uh, you have selected our city, I for one, uh, want to heartily commend you and, uh, let you know that I support this type of investment in the economic development of our industrial base. Uh, when you look at the industrial base out at that, out in specifically the part of town where you're at, we saw a, uh, vacancies and a struggle whenever we were looking at the overall activity associated with the economic development of the area. And so, again, I see this as an incentive. I see this as an investment. And I think that it is very important that we let, um, industry and business leaders know that the City of Fayetteville is very serious about developing a broad and diverse economic environment. We cannot depend just on, uh, the university. We cannot depend just on our medical system, although they're very big employers, and we certainly value that as a basis of our income. But, uh, from a personal basis, my father had a career at Superior. And Superior had many ups and downs. During the time that he was in, an industrial worker and supported our family, we saw Shakespeare leave. We saw standard register struggle. The Superior maintained their activity out at the industrial park and really allowed a broad and diverse workforce to develop that otherwise would not be developed in our area. Not everyone is headed to higher education. We must keep technical skills and technical training available to this broad base here in northwest Arkansas. So, I see this as an investment in those individuals that may not otherwise have the opportunity to have valued employment and become very valued, uh, contributors and have a quality of life here in the City of Fayetteville and in northwest Arkansas. So, I heartily support this. And I hope that this will, uh, be indeed, if you look at the overall value of this, it's almost a token gesture, but it is an important gesture that we, uh, support this as you grow with our community and bring this broad and diverse, uh, workforce development here in, in this unmet area of, of our economy. So, thank you.
Sure, yes.
Um, I wanna clarify that, uh, these jobs pay eleven dollars and fifteen cents an hour. Is that correct?
I, I wanted to correct that. Um, there's, right now, we have, uh, one team leader position, seven material specialist positions open. Then, when I did the application, we've also since then added two inside sales positions that are going in. I'm also in negotiations with corporate to add another position right now. Um, one, the one position will be between fifteen, sixteen dollars an hour. The seven positions are between twelve, or twelve thirty-five an hour, I'm sorry. And then the other two positions are the sales, the inside sales positions are between forty and fifty-five thousand a year. They're a salaried position. And the training position right now, I don't know what it'd be because I haven't gotten approved yet, but it will be a salaried position that I would figure would be close to the forty thousand range.
Well, that sounds better, but, um, I would just like to point out that MIT has done some studies on what constitutes a living wage in our area. And I think it's fair to assume that these are jobs for adults, and that we're a community that values family, so you should be able to support, uh, at least one child on your wage. Um, and for one adult with one child, a living wage in Fayetteville is considered sixteen eighty-five an hour. And anything less than that is really hard to get by on. That's not someone who has a lot of economic buying power in our community. Um, and so I think that's where, where I'm having a hard time with this. You know, we only have four point nine percent unemployment in our region, but one in four people, twenty-five percent, are food insecure. And that's the working poor. That's people who work hard and don't make enough to support their families. And I have a hard time for us incentivizing, you know, this type of, of supplement, which is kind of like corporate welfare, for an employer that would take the labor of our workforce and then leave them in poverty.
Sure. I can agre, I can agree with that. Um, our median salary range right now is sixteen fifty. These are, most of these are entry-level positions that are coming in. Um, in addition to this, Carsher off, offers excellent benefits that are pretty much unmatched of any company that I've been involved with. Um, we, Carsher pays ninety percent of our health benefits. Um, the employee pays ten percent. For instance, my insurance alone, I pay forty dollars a month is what I pay for my health insurance. I had two heart attacks three years ago. I paid twenty-five hundred dollars out of my pocket. Carsher is self-insured. They paid everything else.
So, what did you say that median wage was again?
Sixteen fifty.
Is that sixteen fifty?
Mm-hmm.
And I can, and I will support this.
Okay.
Well, I, you know, you mentioned installing a chiller system in your factory, and for someone who's worked in a factory before, um, during college, in the company I still work for, I can greatly appreciate that because there were days when I was going down to help out with inventory, and it would be two hundred degrees. It would feel like that. You'd just be sweating. Um, I appreciate your economic, economic, um, investment in Fayetteville. I appreciate the jobs, and I'd like to make a motion to pass the resolution.
Second.
No, I'll get nothing else.
Okay.
I'm not gonna say it.
Okay.
And I'd just also like to mention that, you know, we've made a lot of other, uh, investments in our Commerce District, so, you know, this isn't just, um, about this business, but we've added, uh, sidewalks, street lighting. Uh, we've just approved funding to expand our multi-use trail to the area. And, uh, we've, uh, commissioned a comprehensive transportation plan to deliver reliable transportation for the workforce there. So, thank you.
Actually, we, we just wanted to end by saying we really applaud and really thank the Mayor Jordan and the City Council for really working so tirelessly to make City of Fayetteville, you know, a very, very attractive place, uh, and make it a lot easier for us to try to get business to stay in Fayetteville, to expand in Fayetteville, and also to get others who are looking, checking us out, out there to see what we are doing. And so, actually, for us to come before you with this request, and you are, and actually, yes, ninety-six hundred dollars is the maximum uh, that could go back potentially to Carsher, which is not a lot of money, but it is sending a signal that, you know, with the support of the city, that means the city is sending a message to the existing businesses and to all the businesses out there that are looking at us that, you know, the City of Fayetteville is serious about being a partner to our business. It's being, you know, supportive to our business by doing all the improvement, um, that, that our council match I've just mentioned. And so, so we are really looking, uh, for your support to approve, uh, this request tonight.
Okay. Adele?
And I wanted to say that I heartily support your coming and your, your...
And I wanted to say that I heartily support your coming and your huge investment in the city of Fayetteville. We greatly appreciate it. We know that, you know, the more people we can have going to work every day, the better life is in Fayetteville. Thank you so much, thank you.
To hear this called or compared to corporate welfare is, in my opinion, absurd and offensive to you and your company, and I want to apologize on behalf of just myself that you had to hear it.
Me too, me too.
I want to thank you, Mr. Taylor, for coming. I would have never thought this was your first time in front of a microphone because you did a great job. I also want to thank Carter. They've invested in Fayetteville by taking this property and reviving it. For years, I wondered when the Hannah Building would get a good business like you to really see its value, and there was a lot of value there, and you're maximizing that, you will continue to. You're reinvesting in our city through jobs and expansion, and it'll add to our city's continuing growth and success for years. I'm thrilled that we can partner with such a successful company. Business is very competitive, it's important, as Chung was saying, for a city like ours to have a healthy business environment, and not just you, but many, many others who may be looking to expand into this area. So I believe the citizens would approve us being a partner to a company like yours. You're a value to our community, and I support it wholeheartedly, and thanks again for what you do.
Yes, Ron.
Thank you too. Good job, appreciate you.
Okay. Now, I'm going to take public comment. Now, who would like to address this from the public? Everybody gets one turn to microphone. Keep your comments addressed to the, to me, and who would like to be first? Introduce yourself. Anyone? All right, we'll bring you back to the City Council. Do we have, we have a motion in seconds?
Yes.
Yes, we do.
Okay, any final comments from the council? Sandra, would you please call the row?
Shotmark.
Yes.
Adam.
Yes.
Long.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Marsh.
Yes.
Kenyon.
Yes.
Teddy.
Yes.
Tenny.
Yes.
Okay, thank you all. All right, number three. EDM 13-4331, amend chapters 151, 162, 163, and 164. An ordinance to amend 164.01 Garage and/or Agricultural and Produce Sales, 161.10 X Unit 24 Home Occupation, 163.08 Home Occupations, and 164.04 Urban Agricultural Fowl, Bees, and Goats of the Unified Development Code. Kit.
Whereas the City Council wishes to permit owners of property in single-family residential and educationally zoned districts to keep and sell ducks, female chickens, bees, and certain goats under certain conditions to promote urban agriculture and access to locally grown food. Now therefore, it being ordained by the City Council of the City of Fayetteville, Arkansas, Section 1, that the City Council of the City of Fayetteville, Arkansas hereby repeal Section 164.01 Garage Sales and enact a new Section 164.01 Garage and/or Agricultural and Produce Sales as shown on Exhibit A attached here, too. Section 2, that the City Council of the City of Fayetteville, Arkansas hereby repeal Section 162.01 X Unit 24 Home Occupation and enact a replacement Section 162.01 X Unit 24 Home Occupation as shown on Exhibit B attached here, too. Section 3, the City Council of the City of Fayetteville, Arkansas hereby repeal Section 163.08 Home Occupations by repealing it in its entirety and enacting a replacement Section 163.08 Home Occupations as shown on Exhibit C. And Section 4, that the City Council of the City of Fayetteville, Arkansas hereby repeals Section 164.04 Animals and Fowl and enact a replacement Section 164.04 Urban Agricultural Fowl, Bees, and Goats as shown on Exhibit D.
Okay.
Mayor, Council, good evening. Before you is what has commonly been referred to as the Urban Agriculture Ordinance, but as you heard the Mayor and Mr. Williams describe it, it's actually a series of ordinance changes to four different sections of the Unified Development Code. And I'll attempt to explain what all those changes mean to you all in a few moments after I give you a little bit of background on this, on this proposed ordinance, this proposed series of ordinance changes. Fayetteville has seen a growing interest in food, in food insecurity issues over the past number of years. Local, a couple of local surveys and studies have pointed out that 15% of Washington County residents are defined as food insecure, and what, the Washington County has the second highest SNAP or food stamps usage rate in the state of Arkansas. You combine these statistics with the fact that food, on average, travels over 1,500 miles from farm to plate, and you begin to recognize that we have an opportunity to correct some of these food insecurity issues and do something to support our, our local economy and build a more robust local food economy. In response to a couple of these statistics, Feed Fayetteville and the Fayetteville Local Foods, Fayetteville Forward Local Foods Group in 2012 commissioned two different studies to ask citizens how the city could, could address these issues and help, help to work to correct some of these food insecurity issues. Three different items were identified in those surveys. Number one was reviewing the Unified Development Code and recommending changes that would ease and increase citizens' ability to produce food. The second was exploring the possibility of expanded opportunities to sell food on-site where grown. And the third was review of the Animals and Fowl Ordinance for possible increases in the type and number of animals permitted inside the city of Fayetteville. So in March of 2013, with the support of the mayor, city staff brought a resolution to you all that asked, you all passed, and that resolution asked city staff to work with stakeholders to come and bring a series of changes, recommended changes to the Unified Development Code that would address those three issues. Those changes are being presented in two different sections, the first of which is onsite sales and the second is animals. Three of the proposed Unified Development Code changes address the onsite sales component. The first is the change to Chapter 164-10, which defines garage sales. That change proposes to add agricultural and produce sales to the already existing definition for garage sales. And what that would do is essentially allow by right in any residential district inside the city of Fayetteville agricultural produce sales to take place in tandem with or in place of already allowed garage sales that homeowners have. And homeowners are allowed to do up to four garage sales, three days in length by right in the, in any residential zoning district throughout the city. The second change is to Chapter 162.01, that is the use unit that defines home occupations. Home occupations are conditional uses in any residential zoning district throughout the city. And this change proposes to add agricultural sales as a, as a use under that conditional use definition for home occupations. And so that, what that would essentially do is allow a homeowner who wants to have permanent agricultural sales, not just three or four times a year, like under the garage sale definition, but someone who wants to have permanent agricultural sales from their home, to come to the Planning Commission and ask for a conditional use to do so. There are some restrictions, they would only, those sales could only take place in up to a third of their property, so it would be limited and very small scale in nature. The third and final change under the sales section is to the use unit definition, which defines home occupations. And that would simply clarify that those sales, as part of those home occupations, could take place not just in the home, but in an accessory structure on that property, such as a garage, an accessory dwelling unit, a barn, something of that nature. And this change would also allow for a small signage, no larger than three square feet, for that homeowner to advertise the sale of those products. Moving on to the animals section, when the, when the Urban Agriculture Stakeholder Group began to discuss animals and allowances for animals inside the city of Fayetteville, they felt really strongly that properties of different sizes ought to be treated differently inside the city of Fayetteville. As you, as you may know, the current Animals and Fowl Ordinance allows up to four fowl on any lot inside the city. And the Urban Ag Stakeholder Group felt really strongly that larger lots ought to be, have greater carrying capacity for animals and therefore ought to be allowed to have, ought to have more animals on those properties. And so all of the animal, proposed animal regulations that I'll share with you abide by what I like to refer to as the lot area requirement, so that as the lot gets larger, the number of animals allowed on those lots get larger. And those, those lot area, excuse me, those lot area requirements apply to fowl, bees, and goats. And, before I tell you the specifics about the fowl, bees, and goats, I'd like to also add that for, for all of those animals, these, these regulations are being applied to, are not being applied to lands that are zoned agricultural. Those lands are already allowed to practice animal husbandry and have farm animals on them. These regulations apply to single-family residential properties and properties that are defined as educational. All of these, each of the sections on fowl, bees, and goats would require that animals be kept in a humane and sanitary condition, and also require that animals, shelters, coops, beehives, stables, and whatnot be kept in the side or rear of the property. And when looking specifically at the requirements on fowl, we're defining fowl in these proposed ordinances as female chickens or ducks. We're not allowing any roosters, that's consistent with the existing Animals and Fowl Ordinance. Any lot inside the city of Fayetteville is going to be allowed to have four fowl by right, which is, excuse me, any single-family or educational lot would be allowed four, just consistent with what is currently allowed. But as those lots get larger, a property owner would be allowed one additional fowl for every 1,250 square foot of lot area in excess of 5,000 square feet of lot area. So you can see in the table right here, some examples of what that would do. For example, lots, a lot that is 8,000 square feet would be allowed up to six fowl. A lot that is a true quarter acre lot, a little over 10,000 square feet would be allowed to eight fowl. And then a lot 25,000 square feet and larger, which is very large, larger than a half acre, would be allowed the maximum number of fowl by this ordinance, which is up to 20 fowl. Also important to note that coops, chicken coops, as I mentioned, they have to be kept in the, in the rear side yard, but they also have to be, they're allowed to be located no closer than 25 feet to a neighbor's residence, and they also have to meet the underlying zoning for the property. Here's an example, aerial photograph of a Ward 4 property, approximately 10,000 square feet. Lot area would be allowed to have a maximum of eight fowl. The shaded area in the backyard represents where that coop could be located for those fowl. You can see we've got a 15-foot rear setback, we've got five-foot setbacks here and here on the side property line, and then we've got a 25-foot setback requirement from the two neighboring properties, neighboring homes. Another example, a larger lot in Ward 3, 18,000 plus square feet in lot area would be allowed up to a maximum of 14 fowl. Similarly, the coop could be located in the shaded area, five-foot setback from the side property line, 15-foot from the rear property line, and then we've got the 25-foot setback from this property to the south. Moving on to bees. Two hives would be allowed on any lot, any residential or educational lot, excuse me. For lots larger than 5,000 square feet, a property owner would be allowed to have one additional beehive for every 2,500 square feet in lot area. So you can see in the table, a lot that is 8,000 square feet would be allowed three hives. Lots that are larger than 10,000 square feet would be allowed up to the maximum of four hives. Beehives are not allowed to be any closer than 20 feet to a fenced property line and 100 feet from a unfenced property line. Beekeepers must obey all Arkansas apiary laws, which is part of the Arkansas State Plant Board and governs beekeeping inside the state of Arkansas. And then we're also saying that no Africanized bees are allowed inside the city of Fayetteville, and any beekeeper would tell you you wouldn't want Africanized bees anyway. An example, illustration of what that would do in a historic district lot in Ward 2, this lot is 9,000 square feet would be allowed to have three beehives inside the shaded area in the backyard, and you can see, assuming this is a fenced property line, we've got a 20-foot setback from the side, rear, both sides, and then the rear property line. For goats, we're defining allowable goats inside the city of Fayetteville as female dwarf and pygmy goats. These are the, the little guys, they're about 85 pounds maximum and about two feet tall at the shoulders. We're not allowing any male goats or any bucks. The Urban Ag Stakeholder Group felt really strongly that this ordinance was about providing food, and therefore, female goats obviously can provide milk, and that was the rationale there. Goats are required to have RFID microchips, similar to what is required for dogs and cats. In fact, our Animal Services Division is equipped, and we've, we've had conversations with them about the ability to provide that service to our citizens that do want to have goats. Goats would be allowed, you have to have a minimum of a 10,000 square foot lot to have any goats, and that's a little bit different from, from bees and fowl where we were allowing a certain number of animals on any lot. You have to have a lot larger than 10,000 square feet to have any goats, and then for lots that are 15,000 square feet and larger, you're allowed to have three goats. I should back up. If you have a 10,000 square foot lot, you can have two goats, and you can't have one, you actually have to have two. The requirement is that, the minimum number is two for a 10,000 square foot lot, and that's because goats tend to be more social animals, the thought processes that a goat is less likely to make noise and disturb neighbors if they have a companion or a second goat. So two goats on a 10,000 square foot lot, three goats on a lot that is 15,000 square foot and larger. So if you apply that principle to a Ward 3 lot that's about 8,700 square foot in lot area, we're not going to be, this, this property owner is not going to be allowed to have any goats. This Ward 1 lot that is larger than 15,000 square foot would be allowed to have three goats located inside the shaded area in the backyard. Goats are required, a goat stable or shelter is required to be 50 feet from a neighboring property, so we've got a 50-foot rear setback from these properties, and then we've got a 15-foot side setbacks here and here, and then remaining a 50-foot setback on both sides in this area as well. All of these changes were presented to, first presented to the Planning Commission on December 9th. The Planning Commission asked many questions about the proposed ordinance changes. They did vote four to four on whether or not to forward these changes to you all on that December 9th meeting. On a tie vote at the Planning Commission, a motion fails. We worked, Planning Commission, after that meeting to enact some changes to the proposed ordinances. Those changes were, were, I think, vital to making a much stronger ordinance. Those changes clarified the manure disposal requirements for both fowl and goats. They also provided a clarification for the signage requirement for bees, and they also restricted goats to backyards only. If you'll recall, I mentioned that stables and shelters for goats have to be located in the backyard, but under the original, excuse me, proposal, the goats themselves, if, if a front yard were fenced, could access that front yard, and the Planning Commission felt like it was really important to keep those goats access restricted to the backyard. So we, we added all three of those changes to the proposal and brought it back to the Planning Commission on January 13th, and at that meeting, the Planning Commission voted seven to zero to forward these changes to you all. These changes have also been presented at all four wards in meetings during the fall of 2012. We've had extensive conversations with the Animal Services Division, and during those conversations, we recognized the need to make some changes to Chapters 92, 23, and 92, 24 to allow for the impoundment and redemption of livestock, which is currently not addressed at all in our, our animal code. I would, I would also add that, and it's mentioned in your, in your staff memo, that Animal Services also shared with us a potential, an estimate for a potential future need for a livestock trailer and impoundment area or facilities at the Animal Services Division if they start to see an increase in the number of calls related to livestock. Final thing I'd like to share with you on the screen is just kind of more of an FYI. It's something that we've been, been, been trying to share and beat our drum about related to subdivision covenants. Many, many newer subdivisions inside the city of Fayetteville have covenants, and oftentimes those covenants restrict farm animals and do not allow property owners to have farm animals on their property. These ordinances, these ordinance changes in no way supersede or, or overrule anyone's subdivision covenants that they might have on their property. On this map, you'll see areas shaded in yellow, and those areas represent subdivisions inside the city of Fayetteville that were brought into the city after 1950, and 1950 is, 1950 is 1960 when subdivision covenants began to become more commonplace. And then you'll see several green dots. And then you'll see several green dots. Those green dots represent all the lots inside the city of Fayetteville that are 10,000 square feet and larger. You'll see there's a lot of green dots on the map. Those lots would be allowed the two goats, four beehives, and up to eight fowl. Well, when overlaying with the yellow or the subdivision covenants, you can see that that starts to affect how many lots can actually exercise their rights under this ordinance. And so I think it's really important for property owners and homeowners inside the city of Fayetteville that before they invest time, energy, and most importantly, money into urban agriculture and farm animals, that they evaluate and determine if they have any subdivision covenants that might prevent them from being allowed to do so, because the last thing we want to do is create conflict between neighbors and their property owners' association or their subdivision covenants. So at closing, I would just like to say that city staff and stakeholders have spent considerable amount of time working with one another, doing outreach to other communities across the country in terms of what urban agriculture requirements and rules are in those cities. I feel like we have a set of ordinance changes that do two things. They enable and allow those that want to exercise urban agriculture rights and practice urban agriculture inside our city, they allow them the ability to do that, but they also have the proper restrictions and rules and requirements associated with them that'll help protect the peace and tranquility that makes many of Fayetteville's neighborhoods such great places to live.
What questions do we have, Peter?
Mark?
Peter, you're saying that green dots are lots that are large enough to have the goats on, to be, because that's interesting that it's a...
They are, they are single-family residential lots that are large...
Certainly, looks like Wilson Park is going to be a great center of urban agriculture, which is fine, I guess. I'm a little surprised that we have that many lots that are green.
10,000 square feet is roughly a quarter acre lot.
Anything else, Mark?
Just somehow I didn't put that together between North Street and Maple. That's a lot of opportunity.
Peter, thanks so much for your efforts on this and a lot of other things. I consider you an expert on this, so I appreciate you dealing with my questions. And there's been a few, not just to now, but up to now. I wanted to ask you your opinion on something, again, because I think you're an expert. Why do you think subdivisions have covenants against things like this? Just your opinion.
I think that there has, there's been a stigma, I suppose, developed, and some of it probably is or was founded when folks began to move in large numbers into cities and brought farm animals with them, you know, say 50 years ago, 80 years ago. And those animals were in residential settings like this, but there weren't the proper rules in place. I think that subdivision covenants were perhaps a backlash and a reaction to that, to say that, you know, no, we don't want, you know, 25 pigs, if you will, in this small lot in a residential subdivision. That's my guess as to where they started. I also understand that some of subdivision covenants are, began as ways of not just excluding farm animals, but also started as a reaction to integration, as a way of excluding people with certain skin colors. Much of that is gone from subdivision covenants now, but it is in their history in the past. And I suppose it probably was also a way of, or an attempt at trying to create uniformity and consistency in appearance. But honestly, I've never lived in a subdivision that has had covenants, so I really don't have a lot of personal experience with it. But my research on them has indicated that they're written in many different ways. All of the ones I've read for Fayetteville have exclusions for farm animals, and they, some have different variability in terms of when they sunset or if they sunset. Property owners can work together or team together by majority vote and make changes to their subdivision covenants, or, you know, deactivate their subdivision covenants if they want to do so.
I appreciate that, because I think, I don't necessarily think there's a exact right or wrong reason that covenants exist. I spoke with five East Fayetteville, actually Ward Three POA managers, and I told them this is hopefully our first reading, we'll have many more weeks now, because they didn't really know the details, they'll know now that it's going to come out. So hopefully in the next few weeks, we'll hear from those people. Their first thing they said was property values is why you have covenants, and without digging into this particular thing, but I was just getting your opinion on it, I appreciate that. I do have a question, though, about conditional use permits, because I want to be clear on this, for more permanent sales of food out of the house. I heard that, and then you moved on to something else, and I wanted to bring that back up. You said that if someone wanted to do that, they would go in front of planning and get a conditional use for more permanent type selling out of their house. Is that right?
That is correct. Under a, they would get a conditional use for a home occupation.
And then tell me again about the signage part, because I didn't understand that.
If it's the same as the existing home occupations, if you're an accountant or someone who wants to run a business out of your home, you have to get a home occupation permit, I think you're allowed a one non-eliminated three-square-foot sign on the wall.
On the wall or in the window?
Correct.
It would be the same as if I opened something in my house, and I was allowed to open something in my house.
We have a lot of the yoga studio, you know, you have a yoga class in your house three times a week.
I understand.
So things like that, it'd fall under the same category.
And there, is there rules covering what the sign has to look like, or what it has to be made of, or what, if it can be lit? I mean, is that...
It's non-eliminated, maximum three square feet. We can't, can't talk about content at all about the sign, but yes, that would be just me.
Unanimated, non-illuminated. Down it against a...
Thank you for that clarification. I have a couple more, sorry. About goats and lot size, the examples you used, and I appreciate you bringing some examples of other cities and what they're doing, because that's really helpful to me. I saw only one city on your list of examples with three goats as the max, which is what you're proposing. So I'm, why did you choose three? I saw Charlottesville, Virginia had three, the other ones had a max of two or one that I saw, unless I'm looking at it wrong.
Yeah, there's actually three cities at the top that have no max as well.
Okay, so you had, okay.
We originally started with six as the original proposal that was actually brought to the four wards, and in conversations with the mayor and the Urban Ag Stakeholder Group, after presenting the proposed changes at the ward meetings and getting feedback, we decided that it probably would be best to pare back the number of goats. And we debated two or three, and we settled on three. We felt like it was a reasonable number, it was half of where we started, and it was, you know, similar to the two peer cities that we communicated with the most, which was Charlottesville and Fort Collins. Charlottesville actually has had more experience with their ordinance on goats. They've had theirs in effect, I think, since 2011, and in my communication with them, they have three families that have goats in there inside Charlottesville. I don't know if they have the maximum number of three or not, but, and they had had relatively few complaints related to their goats.
A couple of concerns that you and I have talked about, what I wanted to bring them out here in front of staff as well to get their opinions. One is the fencing question that you and I talked about. There's nothing in this that forces someone that has urban agriculture in their backyard to have any certain type of fence. Is that correct?
No, the statement on goats simply states that they must have a secure fence, and the rationale behind saying secure and not saying it has to be four foot tall, five foot tall, seven foot tall, is that, you know, one goat might be able to jump a five-foot fence, another goat might be able to jump a seven-foot fence. All depends how agile the goat is. And so we felt like if we put a, if we said the fence had to be a certain height and the goat was able to get out, then it was our bad, because we defined what a secure fence was inadequately, but if we simply stated that they had to have a secure fence and the goat got out, then it's on the property owner, because they did not have a fence that was able to adequately secure that animal.
So that would be interpreted by you or your team or whoever, and then if something were to be proven ineffective, they would, the homeowner would be responsible for fortifying the fence or changing the fence or whatever.
Right. They wouldn't be able to say, hey, you got a bad ordinance, because I built a seven-foot fence and the goat was still able to jump over it.
And the other, the other thing that was brought up initially in the first round of responses that I got from this was language about rental property, and I don't know that that's something that we can even put into this, but there's a lot of people concerned that we're going to possibly approve this or some part of this, and then people on rental properties are going to assume that they can do this. Is that, that's just between the landowner and the renter at this point. So if there's a misinterpretation, then that's, that's their problem. I'm trying to avoid problems coming down the pike, so I just want to, I don't, I don't know if it's even necessary to put language in there, I'm just thinking about that out loud.
There's nothing in here to prevent a renter of a single-family home from exercising, you know, what is in here. Yes, they would be allowed to have...
With permission of the landowner.
Assuming that, yeah, that would be between them and their land, and their...
Thank you very much. I will probably come in at you over the next few weeks with a couple of other questions, but thank you so much.
Yes, Al?
First, I want to thank Peter too. You've been very informative walking me through this process, and also the people that work with Feed Fayetteville and Apple Seeds and all those other organizations. During the campaign, I actually went to one of the Fayetteville Forward Food Economy Groups. I didn't really know what meeting I was going to, but they taught me a lot during that. So I just wanted to start by saying that I'm supportive of this, but I do have some very specific questions, and then a few questions that I just want to throw out there for us to think about over the next few weeks, and I too hope that this will take three readings and that will get a lot more community input. I'll start with the specific questions. The first would be, what do we do with the un-microchipped goat? Because we talked about the need to possibly have a livestock trailer or a livestock area, so what do we do right after this passes 30 days if we have that one case? We have that first goat that gets out, it's not microchipped, happens all the time with dogs and cats, so we don't have an animal control vehicle that they'll fit in. Somebody from the city going to pick them up with their car? I mean, you know, what are we going to do there? So I think maybe we should look at, you know, yeah, because they'll eat your car. So we need to look at, you know, the possibility of going ahead with that budget adjustment if we go through here and do that, and also for the livestock area. That's just a question to think about. On the bees, I've talked to a few people about it, and this is really the only concern I've had. As on smaller lots, some people in Ward Four that I've talked to are very concerned about the possibility of having bees in very close proximity to their home. So one thing I'm thinking is that on the section where it says bees, a lot of smalls 8,000 square foot could have three hives, whereas on a lot of 8,000 square feet, they can have zero goats. I might want to see those two match more closely and see maybe on a lot of 8,000 square feet have no hives, and when it gets to 10,900 square feet, be able to see bees then. But I'd like to see a little bit bigger buffer when it comes to bees. Then on fence, I want to make sure that we make it very clear that, and we had this discussion in the Animal Services a couple of years ago, that we're not talking about, and I can't use the copyrighted word that I want to use, but electric fencing that's underground and that you can't see. You know, the type fence where they wear a collar and can walk through. And I know a lot of people in Fayetteville do use them for their animals, but they're not actually legal in the city of Fayetteville for their animals. So I want to make sure that we're very specific about that. Three other things that I want us to just generally think about as we move forward. The first one about covenants, you know, when we talk about neighborhood covenants protect those people that live in areas with covenants, my question is, do they? Because is there the possibility that a lot of neighborhoods' covenants have left out livestock because the city already had it ruled out as something that wasn't legal? So are we using that as a term to make people feel more at ease when in fact, they might not be covered in their covenant? So that's just something I want to think about. A question that I was asked just the other day is, why do we live in a city and not the county if we're going to have livestock? So that's something that I'll be thinking about, and I hope that everyone does too, so that we can find some middle ground and pass some good, a good piece of legislation on this one. And three is my concern about conflicts. I don't think we've seen them yet, but I think we will. I don't think we've seen the complaints, and I think over the next, I guess, six weeks or whatever it may be that we hear readings, I think we'll get a lot of public input on this, so I just want us to approach this very carefully. I want to see something like this pass. I just, I want us to be very careful about it going forward. Those are just my initial thoughts, so thank you.
Okay, what other questions do we have? Sure.
I just wanted to clarify, you keep saying single-family residential. What about people, I'll use myself as an example, I have a large lot in South Fayetteville that's zoned RMF 25. Could I have livestock?
Good, that's a great question. The way it is worded is, it talks about the use of the property, not the zoning of the property. So, for example, your example, I also live in a single-family home on a RMF 24 property. We would both be allowed, based on our lot size, number of animals that the ordinance prescribes. So it's the use of the property, not the zoning designation of the property. Great question.
And I would just like to thank you for all your work. I think that this is fantastic. I think it puts us really in line with our peer cities. The only thing that I have some concerns about is I feel like the setback on the bees with an unfenced yard might be a bit too large, because I think we have a lot of long, narrow lots, and, you know, you're prohibiting bees in a lot of areas that could probably do fine, as long as that there was signage, you were communicating with your neighbors, they knew that they were there. So I think that I would like to see that reduced if possible, but overall, I think that this is fantastic, and I think it's going to go a long way to help us address food insecurity.
I actually received a similar comment, I was going to save this for the public comment section, but I'll go ahead and share it with you all now, but I received a call today from Jim Pickett with the Northwest Arkansas Beekeepers Association, who expressed a similar concern to yours, that the 100-foot setback requirement for unfenced property lines, he characterized it as being not realistic. He used his example lot, which measures 200 feet in width by 140 foot in depth, and said that, you know, 100 feet from each property line would put him in the center, and he suggested shrinking that number.
What else do we have? Yes?
I just question about enforcement, and I know we've got a place in here about the wholesale and good feeding of the goats and water supplied and all that. When a resident feels, this is kind of to your conflict comment, when a resident feels that something's not being taken care of properly, they're going to call, they're going to call and ask for some staff members to come out and inspect this? Do we know exactly what the plan is going to be for enforcement?
If it's in a, if it's an animal welfare situation, just like any animal that's currently allowed within the city, it would be our Animal Services Division. So they would call and ask for that, to do a welfare checkup essentially of that, of the animal. So we do that often today when we have concerns about citizens within the city and their animals.
Okay, and then a little bit of the same question is about the signs. They're allowed three signs off premises, one on... They're allowed three signs off premises, one on. They have to be removed by 8:00 AM the next day. Where would, where would someone replace an off-premise sign for a sell of...
I'm sorry. I'm not following you.
Let's get back to that. On the sign part of this, the...
The signage for home occupations?
Yeah. So, so when we, yeah, so when, when someone is selling, they replace them wherever they get permission to, right? Do they get a call for enforcement of removal of signs? And how much is this gonna add to...
This is actually, I think you're talking really about garage and agriculture and produce sales. Those are the ones that allow three off-site signs. I think you've probably have seen garage sale signs not on somebody's residence.
Right.
And that is a specific exemption to the sign ordinance. Usually it just allows any kind of off-site sign.
So I guess my question better would be sad. Are we gonna let, so does this allow for off-premise signs for...
The code, the code already did. And now they're simply including within the garage sale code this new agricultural and produce sales. So that if somebody wants to expand the garage sale and sell something else, produce that they have produced, then they can be, they're treated exactly the same as if it's a garage sale. Is that right, Jeremy? So it's really not a change in, in any of that. It's just saying, instead of having only garage sale, now you can sell your produce. Be treated exactly the same as the garage sale. So it's a limited number of times per year?
I think it's, I believe it's four weekends a year if I'm not mistaken.
I think you're right.
Isn't that part of the enforcement where a complaint by folks who don't like the signs being left up too long comes to your office?
And that happens right now.
And that, okay.
We work with theirs.
Do you see that this is gonna cause any kind of, do we need more people to, more staff to, to handle this? If it, I don't know what volume we're looking at. I don't know what your predictions are. You said three in Charlottesville have goats, three families? We're talking, we...
Charlottesville's a town of approximately 45,000 people, so it's a little smaller than Fayetteville. And they've had their ordinance in place since 2011. And last I spoke to their zoning and development officer, which was oh, November, I believe, they had three families with goats. Fort Collins, Colorado is another town similar to Fayetteville where Colorado State University is located. They're about 145,000 people. They passed an ordinance this past summer that allows a maximum of two goats. And last I spoke with their animal control officer, he indicated that one family was in the process of permitting goats in, in Fort Collins.
Well, I think, just to follow up on that, I think most of us hear from our constituents and our, about enforcing things that we already are trying to, to manage in town. And so I just wanted to be sure, I mean, I think, thank you for all your work and for coming Ward Four. And a couple of comments that I've heard more been, have been more about enforcement and what to do if there is a problem or a conflict with a neighbor and how fast someone's gonna get there and are they gonna pick the goat up? And, and what if there's not, you know, proper water and they, they see the, the welfare of the animals in danger? So I, I am concerned about staffing and not doing more than we can handle as a city, not doing more than we can do well with the staff that we have. Or getting some more staff if we needed, if we feel like it's important to do that.
And I think to that point, and Yolanda Fields is here, she might be able to speak to this more. We do have farm animal type calls currently within the city. We generally, our policy is to return them to their premises because we do not have a place to impound them. So those, those animals go back, generally they're in close proximity to the area from which they, which they escaped. And so I guess to your question, Alan, about impounding animals that may not have a, or a goat that does not have a microchip, we'd likely just return it to, back to where it's apparent it was from. Sometimes it takes a little research around the neighborhood, but most often it's pretty easy just to determine where those are because there are not very many of them. And then just work with that property owner. If they don't comply, we issue violation notice, just like with any other, with any other violation. Yolanda, you may want to speak more to that if you have any more details.
While Yolanda comes up, I do want to make a, a comment on this because, you know, most of our calls today are responding to domestic pets. So this doesn't come without some investment. I mean, the investment in training for people to know how to assess whether the welfare of a goat or a farm animal is adequate. Because our, just like our people have been trained on domestic pets, they're gonna have to be trained on, on the others. There's a, a time and expense to do that. So, and one of the things I think we have to be very careful of, and this is not a statement on this ordinance, it's a statement just in general in council policy changes. You're gonna see it in our agenda, council agenda memo formats now, where it used to say budget impact, we're changing it to say budget and staff impact. Because when we make these decisions, many times, any single item is not necessarily a huge issue. It's the collective passage of these things that every time you look up and go, you know, what kind of staffing requirement have we turned this into? Particularly in time periods when we've not added headcount to city staff. So that's not a statement for this ordinance, it's a statement in, in general. And I think it's a real, a, a real issue that if we're going to have this, none of us expect people to not follow the ordinance, but if we have to pick up one of these animals, we're going to need the equipment necessary to do so. And it, you can't wait until you have the call to think about acquiring it. So it's a part of planning, you know, to me, that when you do these ordinances, it's one of the reasons that I guess we get 31 days from the date you pass something to implement because there's planning that goes into place if you so choose to do it. In this case, we don't have a budget to go out and buy this kind of equipment. So if you pass this, you can expect just to see that that request will come forward because we will have to have the tools necessary for us to have to be successful to handle the ordinance you pass.
Don, that was right to my point and I thank you. And I want to have the tools, but I also want to have the headcount. I mean, the complaints that I've had to my house, we've got people in the neighborhood with chickens and I support that, it doesn't bother me at all, until one of the chickens turns into a rooster. And then they call and they want something done and they want, people who sleep with their windows open in the summer want something done immediately. And so it, it is about a trailer, but it's also about the headcount to respond.
And I'm gonna tell you though, Councilwoman Adams, that doesn't just relate to this ordinance. We get those calls today where someone wants us to respond at 2:00 in the morning to an animal that they see running loose by ABC Company on Mall Avenue. And we have certain protocols because we do have only a certain amount of designated staff, only a certain amount of approved overtime. And so sometimes, you know, we're, we're having to make calls on what is a critical staff response after hours. So it, it happens today with our current ordinances where we will have people call and complain because it doesn't meet our threshold to respond after hours. It's something we handle the next day unless, of course, it's a life-threatening item. And those are the kind of policies we bring to you and if you want them changed, we change them. But we're also asking for the headcount or our budget of overtime to handle those.
And I believe you're handling them very, very well and I want to make sure that nothing I've said indicated that I think we're not handling it. I think we're doing a super job. And I just want us to be cautious about adding something that would add stress or diminish the, the services that our citizens are given now. So, thank you.
I want to reiterate a point that Peter made though, and I think it's why maybe as the Chief of Staff, I'm not being more adamant about it. There hasn't been a single city, peer city, that he has shared information to us that we've seen this massive influx of bees, goats, chickens come in, into play. And we're talking about very large cities, cities as large as Portland, which are significantly larger than us, Charlottesville with 45,000 people, which is about 30 minutes from my hometown in Virginia, Fort Collins, which is significantly larger than us. There has not been, and these are ordinances that have been in effect for multiple years. This is not just a one-year implementation. So, you know, I tend to look at Fort Collins because it's been a benchmark city that we've looked at for many other things. I talked to the city manager when, when I went to the Digital Cities presentation that Sarah was at in Seattle. They haven't had issues. It doesn't mean that you won't, it's just we haven't seen a huge influx. So I haven't been as anxious about thinking that all 73,000 citizens are gonna go out and get one of these three things we're talking about.
Thank you.
Well, I guess all the questions have been answered.
Well, I would appreciate hearing you speak to the way, how you feel your staffing and needs are, are right now. Are you, are you in good shape to take this on? Do you feel good about...
Since we really don't have any idea of what the true number is going to be, I have to say that at this point, yes. The only thing that we are lacking would be a way to transport if we're not able to locate where a specific goat actually belongs, because I know sometimes it can travel quite a ways. And if they're not microchipped, we're not gonna be able to locate their home. Or if we do have to remove any goats from their current location, then we do not have a way to transport them, nor do we have anywhere to house them at this point in time. And then we would also be looking at probably a modification for, for feeding and so forth. So that part of it, we did not really, we can't really tell.
Thank you.
Okay. Matt, you have a question?
Why wouldn't our current impoundment truck be capable of holding a goat?
A goat of that size would not, although it might fit, it would be inhumane because a dog that you place in a, in a, in the size crate that we currently have will pretty much hold still. A goat is going to be more active and is a little bit harder to maneuver into that type of containment area because they, they are more rambunctious than a, than a dog.
So it's an issue of attitude, not such? Because I know a lot of the other towns...
Exactly. Yes, because they are, it would be inhumane to put them in a size kennel, that, that size of a kennel because they, they are going to move and they're going to want to get out and they are stronger and, and we don't want them to get hurt. In their, in their eagerness to escape, they might end up hurting themselves or, or one of the others.
You don't think we'd have the same issue with a horse trailer?
I don't think so because if they're walking into it, they have more space and they might not be as, as frightened. They're already going to be frightened because they're being captured. And now you're moving them into a really tiny confined space and they are gonna react.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions for Yolanda? Yes, Alan?
I did have a question. A lot of our staff, they do an excellent job and our volunteers do also at the shelter.
Yes, they do.
They do a lot of work, walking animals, you know, cleaning kennels, all kinds of things down at the shelter, so.
Socializing, grooming, yes.
Yeah. I mean, I applaud all of your efforts, y'all do a great job. My question is, how with goats, would we handle that? I mean, would the volunteers be trained or would it just be staff time at that...
I think at this point, we would, we would want staff to be working with the animals just because they, they will, we're not sure how they're going to react and we don't want anybody getting hurt. And we would have our staff trained as to how to handle the animals. So we'd be best just letting staff take care of the livestock.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Yolanda.
Thank you.
What other questions do we have for staff? Yes?
And this is for Peter. Will this enable us to use goats for land management at the city level? I mean, I know, having moved here from Seattle, we, the city there had used them to clear the side of interstate highways for land, for land clearing around schools and other areas. And they're great at removing invasive species.
Yeah, and that's a great question, Alderman Marsh. In Section 10 of, on goats, you'll see that we say nothing in this section would restrict goats from being used on educational properties. And then additionally, goats can be used for a maximum of two weeks for the purposes of land clearing and vegetation removal.
Thank you.
Anything else? Okay. All right. Now we'll take public comment. Now, everybody gets one turn at the microphone, introduce yourself, keep your remarks to me. And who will be first? Joyce?
Hi, my name is Joyce Hale. And Mr. Mayor and Council, I'm very pleased to have this opportunity. This becomes a very nostalgic kind of topic for me, sort of a Back to the Future. I grew up with goats. And the reason was, I had a tremendous amount of very expensive allergies. And so my parents, which were not too well endowed money-wise, found that having goats was a tremendous medical assistance for me. So that was one of these unintended consequences that you might be able to facilitate with something like this. The other thing is that we really have an opportunity here for young people to have an additional form of education. And growing up with the responsibility of an animal, a dog and a cat is wonderful, but one that produces, that's entrepreneurial. And having the responsibility of understanding cost and benefits was something that I learned a great deal in 4H work. It carried me through all of my years of education, literally through college with my scholarships. It also carried my daughter, some of you might know Kelly Sega, carried her through 4H. And so I think that we're looking at some other opportunities that go beyond some of the problems that we're trying to see on the front end. And I really respect you for trying to anticipate those things that are going to come because they will. But also don't forget those other pluses. Because our young people today are having a harder and harder time trying to find employment. And when they do, many times, it's a very token kind of thing for their experience. And so I think that truly even a small taste of agriculture and the benefits that it can derive on a personal and community level are something that we just can't afford not to consider tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Joyce. Who would be next?
Hello, Council, Mayor. My name is Don Bennett. I'm the founder and director of Tricycle Farms, a two-acre site in the geographic center of the city. And I guess you would assume that I'm pretty much for this ordinance and your support for it. There's been a lot of talk about food insecurity and I really thank Joyce for talking about the community and the benefits that we're gonna derive from this. I hope you'll really consider that some of the questions and good questions to anticipate these possible problems, I don't think any of these things we fear are ever going to exist. But I think what really is going to happen is that we're going to come together and we're gonna collaborate and we're gonna try to lick this food insecurity that we find in our own county, 22,000 people. In my neighborhood, 43% of the people are living in poverty and that's not because they're unemployed, it's because they're underemployed and they do need something, I think, a connection to their food and their own empowerment to control that. It's, it's, it's about a deep economy and a resilient community that I think we can build for people who don't have this connection to the other economy. And I really hope you'll consider that there's gonna be a lot of pluses for this community that we're creating. Just in our two, our neighborhood, we've created collaborations with the church across the street. The neighbors that surround us, there are people that are moving into the area. I think what's urban agriculture and a connection to food affords us is really an enrichment of these communities and these neighborhoods that are in need of some sort of rising up. And in this sense, we're, we're doing a farm raising and it's by community. There are 888 members in our group on Facebook. You know, I never thought I'd be involved in social media, but it's been a way for us to create the awareness of food insecurity and food sovereignty. Around us, there, the states of Tennessee and Missouri and Oklahoma have virtually ripped out gardens out of front yards where people were owning their own food security. And I don't believe anything like that would happen in this city. When we were having that discussion, that lively discussion about Mount Kessler, there were so many words used to describe what that was gonna bring to our city. And I was thinking, yes, that's what this urban ag ordinance is about too. It's about connection, empowerment, it's about economy, it's about being, having an American dream that you have some sort of control over. American dream that you have some sort of control over. And these wages, these healthcare costs, the obesity that's in our state, these are addressed for us if we just meet in the garden. And I just want to say, let's get growing Fayetteville, and thank you. And thank you, Peter, and Christina Jones, and the other members of the staff at the planning department. Thank Nicole Savita from the LLM program at the university, the only food law program in the nation. And thanks for Jeff Huber at the Community Design Center. Thanks for Adrian Seanfield from Feed Fayetteville, and thanks for Quinn Montana from Slow Food. We really worked hard for, gosh, it had to have been over a year, to really come up with something that I think all of Fayetteville can get behind, and we won't create a lot of problems. And what we will do is create, I think, a food city where everybody can have a meal every day, especially the children who, right now, one in four, every fourth child you see is food insecure. So just think about that when we're talking about this passing, I hope. Thank you.
Okay. Who would be, yes?
Hi, my name is Quinn Montana, and I am a four of a Slow Food chapter here, and a local food, variety of local food group. I just wanted to share a little anecdote. I have four little chickens in my yard, and my neighbor, I have two, two boys live next door, in fact, their dad was a scoutmaster who was down here this evening. And by the way, we did talk about it, and there is an Animal Husbandry Scout Merit Badge as well, so that, in addition to 4H, it's another venue where kids can get involved with that kind of thing. But, you know, I have the little chickens, and the boys are just fascinated with the chickens, and so we share eggs, because they give me mulched leaves, and, you know, we're good neighbors. And so now, the eight-year-old has taken to cooking, and he's, he started with omelets, and he's all excited about it. He loves that they come from those chickens that he knows. And that is the kind of thing that, you know, that it's not just having the eggs and the security of having the eggs, but it's the idea of sparking that idea that this is where our food comes from, and then to get this little guy involved in actually cooking. It's just, there are so many levels that this can be an asset, and I just want to say, you know, thank you for your support.
Thank you. Okay.
Hello, again. My name's Dana Smith, and I am Ward Three resident, a chicken keeper, sustainability coordinator for Fayetteville Public Schools, and also a former resident of Charlottesville, Virginia. So I felt compelled to say, just to stand up here. But I also felt, talking after Quinn, especially, and also what Joyce said about the educational opportunities that urban agriculture affords to, to our youngest members of our community. I want to point out that the language in these changes does include language that would allow fowl and other livestock on educational facilities, which currently is not allowed within our city. So you may or may not be aware that all elementary schools in Fayetteville School District now have school gardens, and gardening and teaching students about growing their own food and making healthy food choices has been an important component for, for the school district's education and for the students. And I'm not saying that we will, in any time in the near future, have any livestock on any of our school campuses, but by having this language, it would allow that to happen if there was interest for a school, and there could be potential educational opportunities for students to not only be learning about how to grow their own vegetables, how to prepare those, but also how to make omelets, how to make healthy protein choices, and incorporate that into a healthy lifestyle that they'll then grow into healthy adults and members of our community. And also with that as well, aside from all the animal pieces to this, I think that the sale on, for residential sale is also an important component, and this goes back to students, too. If we talk about we're teaching our students to grow their own food, why can't we also teach them to be entrepreneurs and to sell that food? And this is a perfect opportunity, especially the language where it'd be similar to a yard sale or garage sale, to provide those opportunities for our students. So thank you so much for considering this and being part of the conversation.
Just a quick question. You said you live in Ward Three. Do you live in a neighborhood with covenants?
That's a great question that I don't know the answer to.
Okay.
Well.
We'll talk about it later, I just.
Right, right. I've actually have, when we bought our house, I asked if there were any covenants, and our realtor informed us that no, there are not. So I'm under the impression that we are in a community that there is not covenant.
Okay.
But looking at the map, I, that's a good question.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
I'll make this quick, because you guys have heard a lot already. My name's Melissa Terry. I live in South Fayetteville. We recently bought a nine-acre existing farm, but it's not considered a farm anymore, because the cattle that ran on there since 1950 were not there for about a year while the farm was in transition. So it just occurred to me that maybe that was another answer to your question of why there are covenants in some newer subdivisions, and so maybe it's a case in some instances where subdivisions were built next to existing farms as opposed to the other way around. So because now, our farm, we'll have to go get it readjusted to turn it back into what it already was, if we want to run cows or do anything like that. So I just wanted to point that out. And that, you know, in subdivisions, it also includes, like, there's typically restrictions against hanging your clothes out to dry, things like that, that are generally just part of basic homesteading. Anyway, so to point out what has already been said in a lot of ways is the food security issue, and so with the school gardens, being able to have that, we do Farm to Head Start with Feed Fayetteville, with our regional projects with Cultivate Community, we have cooking classes, et cetera. And so to be able to teach these in school settings, but then also to be able to work with their families at home to convey this life skill of how to prepare food, what a fresh tomato tastes like, it's, it's the hand up, not the handout mentality of growing our community past one in four residents on Snap. And so, and regardless of income, we have skyrocketing obesity rates that include a heavy, a diet heavily dependent on processed foods, and so this is just a good way for us as a community to adopt a more national perspective of what's called heal, healthy eating and active lifestyles. So I think it's really perfect that this has come up for you guys in the first reading on the same night as Mount Kessler, because we're really addressing both sides of a major national issue. And just in closing, I'll just say that the average age of the American farmer is 57 years old, and so I'm not sure who's going to grow our food if we don't know how to grow our food. So this is a really good way to stabilize our regional economy by having young people and families who know how to do and how to prepare and how to grow food. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Anyone else? Okay. We'll bring you back to the council. I assume we'll be leaving it on this, yes, Mark?
Are we ready to say our piece?
Yeah, sure.
I have received a lot of comments on both sides of this. I think that I'm very fortunate to live in an area where there's open discussion, and as we move forward, I hope that people will look at this as opportunities instead of looking at as nuisances. We are, we already have a lot of controls in place here in the city of Fayetteville to handle nuisances. We have animal control, we have noise ordinances. So a lot of the discussion this evening was on handling concerns that are valid and must be discussed, but we haven't really talked a lot about opportunities until the last couple of speakers. And being raised in a rural area and being active in 4H and all of that, I guess I took it for granted. Didn't really enjoy it, just between you and I. But if any of my neighbors want to do it, I certainly enjoy the fresh eggs that I get from one of my friends that has eggs. And I, I do have a sense of community with my neighbors. When they go on vacation, I get to harvest out of their garden. So there's a neighborhood component to this also, that you develop maybe an easier understanding of your neighbors if you allow to understand what their, their beliefs, their attitudes, their values are as they're approaching their activity with gardening and with urban agriculture. You know, one thing that was brought up to me is there's going to be a goat on every roof in Wilson Park, and we're going to look like, you know, the very stereotype that we're against. I don't think that that's going to occur, and I don't think that there's any reality to that. I think that's more of an urban myth rather than urban agriculture. So I certainly want to hear from everyone that has concerns, but I also hope that we have, as we did with the Mount Kessler, I hope that people will also take the opportunity to discuss the opportunities and to discuss the validity and the way that we can approach this so that we can be good neighbors and that we can offer this additional diverse element to our community, because we are a city that is known for diversity. And I, I just want to encourage people to look at the opportunity as well as the nuisance. Thanks.
Okay. Adela?
When we had our Ward One meeting, I was, we talked about it at two Ward One meetings, and had many, many positive comments, only one negative. So I thought that was pretty good. I was very pleased to know that their, that Ward One is pretty supportive of this whole, whole ordinance. And we did discuss the opportunities and the need, and many of these side benefits that we discussed tonight, which I think are very important.
Matt?
I want to thank staff for the hard work that they've put into this. It's been a long time. At least it seems like it's been a substantial amount of work, so I really appreciate it on behalf of all the Ward Two residents. I'm appreciative that we're going to take some time with this and let this go through all three, all through, all three readings, and even though I think I support this in a real radical way, I understand why the questions are being asked, and I'm, I'm looking forward to the process of answering those questions. You know, when I say I support it in a radical way, I mean, it's tragic how divorced we are from our food. You know, most kids, most kindergartners today don't know what a tomato looks like or even what cauliflower is. And so I think there's a lot of re-education that needs to be done. But mostly, what I want to encourage us to do is rely on the facts as we go forward. You know, the truth is, this ordinance is a very nuts and bolts ordinance. There's nothing fancy about it. It's been compromised already, and I mean that in the best sense. There's been a public process here that has gone through multiple meetings, at least one in every ward. Stakeholder groups from every corner of our community have participated in this, or at least their input has been sought, and we've looked at at least a dozen peer communities. And even through those conversations with people, we don't even represent staff as taking the initiative to suggest and get compromises passed in this version that comes before us. This ordinance, as it is before us, is the middle way. It already is the middle way. There's nothing radical about this. This isn't going to let people run cows on their property or hold horses again, which I think is, the impacts of large animals like that, I think, are the real reasons that we have the state laws against livestock raising in cities. You know, I've been asked a question, too, by, really only two people have spoken to me against this, and they asked me the exact same question, Alderman Long, that you've heard, which is, or their point has been, I moved to the city to get away from farms, from the country. Well, I didn't consider that at all whenever we talked earlier about preserving almost 400 acres of wilderness area. And that would be a concern for me if we were talking about letting folks run cows in historic neighborhoods like Wilson Park. That's not going to happen. And I think this is very, very safe. I don't think there are any staff issues or equipment issues with taking care of a dozen goats or even two dozen goats. We have tens of thousands of dogs and cats in this city. Tens of thousands. And, you know, the two dogs that live next to me that keep me up at 2:00 AM in the morning, I think is a much more common experience for folks in this city than getting kept up by chickens or goats. You know, I think that there's a tendency here, just being at the city, just being in government, whether we're staff or elected officials, to try and be arbiters of every kind of dispute that we can imagine, and I don't think that attitude is helpful in general, and I don't think it's productive in this case. The questions are good, but we should rely when we're answering them on facts, on the science, on the actual experiences. Everyone here enjoys the town square. That doesn't happen without bees. Period. It just doesn't, and we all love it. All the annuals in Wilson Park, those are pollinated by bees. The perennial patches all over the city and every park are sustained by the bees. I don't really think it's a cause for concern that somebody's going to have bees in their backyard, whether it has a fence or not, because when I was a kid, me and all my friends, we were definitely afraid of them, and we didn't go around and try and tip over the hives or play with the bees. And if we tried, we wouldn't really have been able to, because bees fly at about 12 feet in the air, and you can't even jump up and get them. So a lot of these issues, I think, are questions coming from the people who are just, they don't know, and they don't know precisely because we've become so far removed from our food. And we should answer those questions. We're leaders. We were elected to answer these questions. But we shouldn't just say, there's a concern, we need to change it, without figuring out what the facts really are. I had one other point, but before I had just a question, which was to Peter. You said earlier that you had looked at a couple of different examples of covenants in the city. I was wondering how many?
How many examples I'd looked at?
Mm-hmm.
I'm going to say six or seven.
And you said earlier that most of them had prohibitions against livestock?
All the ones that I looked at did, yeah, all six or all seven. I, you know, I didn't look at every covenant in the city. There's probably hundreds.
How did you pick and choose? Was it mostly just random?
It was ones that we were able to find through the county.
Right. Okay. Thanks. I ask because I think that's probably representative. I have a math background, and as a statistician, we're trained to know that whenever you take a sample, even if there are hundreds, you're going to get something that's pretty representative, and I think that's the case here. The last point I wanted to make was, kind of has to do with, I'll talk about golf courses. You know, it used to be that subdivision development, you really wanted a golf course, because that meant the property was really valuable. Well, it turns out, only about 30% of the people who buy a home next to a golf course actually golf. So why do they buy the land there? It's for the view, it's for the pastoral setting. And the folks that have started to look at that phenomenon have discovered they get the exact same kind of benefit, the real estate values, for properties next to farms. So I agree 100% with you, Alderman Kenyon. I think this is about the opportunities, and I think over the next course of the next three readings, we can let the facts answer these questions.
Anybody else? Yes, sir?
I thought a little bit about Alderman Kenyon's question about why covenants and these sorts of things, and I think covenant- And I think covenants came about as people were trying to banish markers of poverty and appear to be more civilized and urbane. And just like Melissa Terry said, that, you know, you can't, covenants will often ban drying your laundry outside on the clothesline. You know, chickens and such were seen as relics of when people were poor and they couldn't afford to go to the store and buy things. But, you know, they see poor as being shameful, but for many people in this community, being poor is a reality. And I'm just going to come out here and say, I'm food insecure. I make $11 an hour, which is why I get so upset at these companies wanting to come in and pay below a living wage. And I have a college degree. And there are a lot of people in this community in the same boat who make hard decisions about, are you going to fix your car so you can get to work? Or are you going to buy groceries? And thankfully, I've lived in a place where I can have a garden. And the first year I moved here, if it wasn't for my garden, I'm not sure what I would have done. And, you know, I'm already thinking about what I'm going to plant this year. And so, I think we need to approach this with a spirit of generosity and realize the bypassing this, we're giving people an opportunity. And maybe that's an opportunity to grow their own food or to make goat's milk soup or beeswax candles, you know, or just get out there and sell those vegetables. And so, let's recognize that, you know, one in four people in our community are struggling with this, and it could happen to any one of us. And so, let's just keep that in mind as we move forward. It could be you, it could be your neighbors, it could be your family. And let's give people a way to provide for themselves.
Okay. Anybody else? All right. I assume we're going to leave it on this reading, correct? Okay. Two weeks we take it up again. Now, Alan, I believe you have an amendment or?
Yes, I, you've all been provided with the memo I wrote of why I'm walking this on. It's just an amendment to Chapter 92. It brings the ordinance on animals into alignment with the changes that we just talked about for urban agriculture and the other changes. Kit had a few-
And since it is an ordinance, I probably ought to read the ordinance once you're through with your introduction.
Kit had a few ideas. I worked with Kit and Animal Services to refine it just a little bit. So, I'll let Kit, I guess, go ahead and read it and-
Okay.
And talk more about it if you want to.
Yeah, this was already placed on your agenda earlier, so let me read it. An ordinance to amend Section 9201 definitions, Section 92.23 impoundment, and Section 92.24 redemption of animals over Fayetteville Code to authorize the animal shelter to accept livestock and to set the redemption fee for their release. Be it ordained by the City Council, City of Fayetteville, Arkansas, Section 1. City Council, City of Fayetteville, Arkansas hereby amend Section 9201 definitions of Chapter 92 animals to add the following definition of livestock as follow. Livestock, any sheep, jenny, goat, fowl, hog, or fowl. Section 2. At the City Council, City of Fayetteville, Arkansas hereby amend Section 92.23 impoundment by repealing subsection A in its entirety and enacting a replacement of subsection A as shown below. The Fayetteville Animal Shelter is authorized to accept from the Animal Control Officer or any private citizen of Fayetteville and to impound any dog, or cat, or livestock found running at large in violation of this subchapter. The Animal Control Officer shall not be required to respond to requests to pick up unconfined cats until the person making the request have confined or restrained the animal so that it can no longer be taken into custody by the Animal Control Officer. The Animal Control Officer may use humane animal traps or tranquilizers to assist in confining the cat. Section 3, that the City Council, City of Fayetteville, Arkansas hereby amend Section 92.24 redemption of animals by repealing subsection 3 in its entirety and enacting replacement subsection 3 under B redemption fees as shown below. Subsection 3, fees for livestock. An owner reclaiming livestock shall pay the cost for such impoundment. Said costs are hereby ascertained to be $10 for the first impoundment and $50 for any subsequent impoundments of that animal within a 12-month period. Section 4, that the City Council, City of Fayetteville, Arkansas hereby enact a new subsection 4 to Section 92.24 redemption of animals as shown below. Subsection 4, boarding fees. In addition to the impoundment and sterilization fees as provided in Section B 1, 2, and 3 of this section, a boarding fee of $10 per day for cats, dogs, and fowl, and $25 per day for other livestock shall be charged for each day the animal is sheltered by the city. And Section 5, that the City Council, City of Fayetteville, Arkansas hereby enact a new subsection 5 to 92.24 redemption of animals as shown below. Subsection 5, rabies vaccination. The city veterinarian may determine that an animal needs to be vaccinated for rabies and vaccinate such animal. The cost of this vaccination must be paid by the owner as part of the redemption fee.
Okay. Alan, what do you have on this?
Well, I just wanted to note that actually, the copy that was handed out to you was the previous, the first draft.
Oh, was it?
Yeah. Kit read the second draft, which is not what you got in your package there.
And I think this is what you are proposing, right?
Yes.
When I just read.
Is actually what I'm proposing. It actually is a little bit more comprehensive. It lines out the fees better. For the definition section, it includes fowl and goats. For the impoundment, it's $10 for a fowl, just because they cost less to impound than dogs or cats. But it does allow the city to impose impoundment fees for $10 for the first offense and $50 for subsequent offenses during the first 12 months, just like we do with dogs and cats. I just wanted to do this as general housekeeping because I like to keep things consistent within our code, and I don't want that gray area to exist between when the, what have been deemed urban agriculture, if it goes into effect, I don't want there to be a 30-day period where there's not code that addresses how to enforce that. So, that's why I've brought it forward and locked it onto the agenda because I wanted it to be considered during the same time frame. I prefer that it be left on the first reading.
Okay. Any questions, council, on this? Any comments on this? Okay. All right, I'll bring it back. We'll leave this on the first reading as well. Okay? Everybody good? All right. Moving along to number four. TECO Safety Incorporated, an ordinance waiving requirements for a competitive bidding and approving a contract, TECO Safety Incorporated, any amount of $192,344.50 for the purchase of TASER products.
Whereas the Fayetteville Police Department has used and trained with TASERS since 2004 and found them effective in preventing injury to both officers and suspects who need to be taken into custody. And whereas the Fayetteville Police Department has performed periodic evaluations on other types of conductive energy weapons to confirm TASER as preferred less-than-lethal weapon. And whereas the department's existing TASER X26 products have been discontinued and have exceeded their five-year warranty. And whereas TECO Safety Incorporated is sole authorized regional supplier for TASER International and has been supplying the Fayetteville Police Department with TASERS since 2004. Now therefore, be it ordained by the City Council, City of Fayetteville, Arkansas, Section 1. At the City Council, the City of Fayetteville, Arkansas hereby finds that such circumstances constitute an exceptional situation where competitive bidding is not feasible or practical, and therefore weighs requirement of formal competitive bidding and approves a contract with TECO Safety Incorporated in the amount of $192,344.50 for the purchase of new TASER products for use by the police department.
Gee.
Thanks, Mayor, council. I think Kit pretty much said it all. We've been using TASERS since about 2004. This is a regularly scheduled replacement and a budgeted item. Currently, TASERS is the only company out there that's making a conductive energy weapon. One reason for the bid waiver. The second reason for the bid waiver is our officers and trainers are already trained to use it, teach it to new officers. And that's the main reason for the bid waiver. Also, TASER has a very limited number of suppliers in the United States currently for Arkansas. It is TECO Safety, so that is the only vendor that can give you a bid if you're buying TASERS in Arkansas.
Okay. Any comments on the TASERS questions? Okay. Any public comment on this? Okay. Bring it back to the council.
May we approve the bid waiver?
Let's go to the second reading.
Second reading.
Second.
We do that.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to go to the second reading, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Sondra, would you please call the robe?
Sotmer?
Yes.
Adam?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes.
Kenyon?
Yes.
Petty?
An ordinance, no, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. An ordinance waiving the requirements of formal competitive bidding and approving a contract with TECO Safety Incorporated in the amount of $192,344.50 for the purchase of TASER products.
Motion to suspend the rules and go to the third and final reading.
We have a motion and a second to go to the third and final reading. Sondra, would you please call the robe?
Sotmer? Adam?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes.
Kenyon?
Yes.
Petty? Tennet?
Yes.
Okay.
An ordinance waiving the requirements of formal competitive bidding and approving a contract with TECO Safety Incorporated in the amount of $192,344.50 for the purchase of TASER products.
Any final comments from the council on this? Sondra, would you please call the robe?
Sotmer?
Yes.
Adam?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes.
Kenyon?
Yes.
Petty? Tennet?
Yes.
Okay. Number five, Come and Go LC Agreement. Resolution to approve the Fourth Amendment to Land Sale Agreement with Come and Go LC to extend the closing date to no later than April 21, 2014, and to agree to equally share the city's portion of the cost of a dedicated left-turn lane. Chris?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. As you all know, the city has entered in a contract with Come and Go to sell about two acres of property at the intersection of Huntsville and Happy Hollow on Highway 16. There've been, this is the Fourth Amendment, so there've been other amendments, obviously. This amendment is related to two things. The first is a cost share that we've been able to get with the Highway Department for the cost of widening the highway. The Highway Department during the permitting process told Come and Go that they did have to widen the highway to make the signal function and make the new street intersection function properly. So, we did negotiate an agreement with the Highway Department to cost share 50% of the cost of that. So, this agreement with Come and Go will provide for the cost share of the city's portion, half of the cost of the intersection work. It's estimated at $250,000, so the city's half would be $125,000 to the Highway Department, and then splitting that with Come and Go, $62,500. The other part of that is just extending the closing date to no later than April 21, and that's just to get some of these other things taken care of. So, I'll answer any questions.
All right. What questions do we have, Chris, on this?
I want to thank Chris for his hard work with the Highway Department because I was afraid that they were not going to cost share. That was their initial response to us, and I was having difficulty with Come and Go to cost share $250,000. They've already invested a lot of money and, you know, not only are they buying it from us for $1,155,000, they've also already paid almost $100,000 as their share of the demolition costs. They have other substantial costs that they're still looking at, and so, they were doing a little pushback. And finally, when Chris was able to get the Highway Department to cost share with us, then Come and Go came on board and said, yes, they would cost share with us like they have in many other things. This traffic signal and new road here is going to be very beneficial, not only to our other parcel, our commercial parcel, that we have yet to sell, but also to that neighborhood along Ray Avenue, which currently in the morning has a very difficult time turning left onto Huntsville. This new signal will give them a protected left, basically, or at least they'll be able to get them out either onto Huntsville Road or onto 15th Street. And so, will, I think, provide great benefits to that particular neighborhood. So, I'm just very glad that you were able to do that, Chris. I don't know how you did it, but congratulations.
Just had to ask.
Multiple times.
Great job.
That's right.
Great job.
Any questions for Chris? Thank you, Chris, very much. All right. Any public comment on this? Okey-dokey. Bring it back to the council.
May we pass the resolution?
A motion and a second to pass the resolution. Any final comments from the council? Sondra, would you please call the robe?
Sotmer?
Yes.
Adam?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes.
Kenyon?
Yes.
Petty?
Yes.
Tennet?
Yes.
Okay. Number six, re-appropriating bonded ongoing capital projects and containing obligations. Resolution to amend the 2014 adopted budget by re-appropriating $75,497,000 in bonded or ongoing capital projects, outstanding obligations, and grant-funded items.
Good evening, Mayor and council. As you know, we present the budget, which is the operating budget plus current capital budget each year in December. The mayor must present that to the council. However, government doesn't stop with a one-year appropriation. Many of our projects span multiple years. The statutes in the state of Arkansas don't provide for multi-year budgets, and they don't in most states. So, what this does is take the reprogrammed capital and roll it forward into the new budget for that year. Each budget ceases to exist at the end of a year, so each year, anything that we have continuing rolls forward. $32 million of this is in bond funds. Majority of that, $21 million is in the road program, almost $6 million in the parking deck. And we do have a few dollars in the water and sewer fund that's associated with road construction projects. About $3 million of this is in grant programs, which have a different year than a calendar year and, of course, span multiple budget years. About $40 million of this is reprogrammed from prior year's capitals that rolls forward into continuing projects till our completion. And I'll be happy to answer any questions.
What questions do we have? Everybody good? All right.
This was reviewed by the Watersure Solid Waste Committee, since it does pertain to some of the projects there and it was approved to bring forward.
Good. Anybody else? Okay. What public comment do we have on this? Okay.
May we pass the resolution?
We have a motion and a second to pass the resolution. Any final comments on this? Okay. Sondra, would you please call the robe?
Sotmer?
Yes.
Adam?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes.
Kenyon?
Yes.
Petty?
Yes.
Tennet?
Yes.
Okay. Number seven, RZN 13-4536. 4310 Martin Luther King Boulevard Edwards. An ordinance rezoning that property described in rezoning petition, RZN 13-4536, for approximately 0.74 acres located on the north side of West Martin Luther King Boulevard, near the border of Farmington, from RA Residential Agricultural to CS Community Services. Kit?
Be it ordained by the City Council, the City of Fayetteville, Arkansas, Section 1. That the City Council, the City of Fayetteville, Arkansas hereby changes the zone classification of the following described property from residential agricultural to community services, as shown in Exhibits A and B attached here to or made a part hereof. Section 2, that the City Council, the City of Fayetteville, Arkansas hereby amends the official zoning map of the City of Fayetteville to reflect the zoning change provided in Section 1.
Chair?
This property is located on the west side of Fayetteville, between Fayetteville and Farmington off of MLK, Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard. It's currently zoned residential agricultural. It's located on the north side of Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard. It's undeveloped hayfield currently, directly adjacent to a relatively new development, the Career Academy Cosmetology School. In March of 2012, the City Council approved rezoning that site for community services, about an acre site. In November of this year, the applicants proposed a C1 zoning, which was denied by the Planning Commission, and they have resubmitted the application for the same zoning as adjacent community services. Our future land use plan designates this site as a city neighborhood area, which supports a variety of uses. As you all know, a busy state highway corridor transitioning from a regional commercial area with businesses such as Walmart, Lowe's, various hotels and shopping areas, to undeveloped land. However, very close or nearby to the west is also commercial development within Farmington. So, it is a portion of a transition, I guess, from Fayetteville to Farmington. We found the proposal is generally consistent with the land use planning objectives and principles. We also feel like that rezoning this property, because there's a large amount of flood plan
Sondra, would you please call the robe?
Shotmire.
Yes.
Adam.
Yes.
Long.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Marsh.
Yes.
Kenyon.
Yes.
Petty.
Yes.
Kennet.
Yes.
An ordinance rezoning that property described in rezoning petition RZN 13-4536 for approximately 3/4 of an acre located on the north side of West Martin Luther King Boulevard near the border of Farmington from residential agricultural to community services.
Any final comments from the council? All right. Sondra, would you please call the robe?
Shotmire.
Yes.
Adam.
Yes.
Long.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Marsh.
Yes.
Kenyon.
Yes.
Petty.
Yes.
Kennet.
Yes.
Okay. Number 8. ADM 13-4603 UDC Amendment, Chapter 161, Use Unit 44 Cottage Housing Development. An ordinance to amend Chapter 161 of Unified Development Code to authorize cottage housing development, UU 44, and to zoning districts in which it was originally approved by Ordinance Number 5462. Kit?
Whereas the City of Fayetteville has long sought to increase availability of quality, affordable housing for its citizens, and whereas the City of Fayetteville has an established policy to encourage infill development and the mixture of different types and sizes of single-family housing within neighborhoods, and whereas providing for a properly planned clustering of small, high-quality detached single-family houses, cottages, within a neighborhood of larger lodging homes can provide attractive, compatible, and affordable housing for our citizens. Now therefore be it ordained by the City Council, the City of Fayetteville, Arkansas, Section 1. That the City Council, the City of Fayetteville, Arkansas hereby amends Chapter 161 zoning regulations of the Unified Development Code to add RR Use Unit 44 Cottage Housing Development, where it was originally approved by Ordinance Number 5462, but has been unintentionally removed and has more specifically identified in Exhibit A.
Okay. Chairman?
In 2011, the City Council adopted Ordinance Number 5462 for cottage housing ordinance. It defined what a cottage housing, cottage housing was, the size, the parameters by which one could request approval. We've had a few of those approved. Since then, I don't believe any have been constructed. A lot of times, what we see here is the financing mechanisms are more difficult. But we do feel as a city, it's helpful for us to remove barriers, and really that goal, we will create opportunities for attainable housing. This is an opportunity for that to occur. So we feel like the banking, financing part of it is still trying to catch up to that, but we try to encourage that where possible. It does appear, though, within the last year, in our single-family zoning districts, that use unit was inadvertently removed. It was supposed to be a conditional use permit in most of those zoning districts. I'm sorry, in the multifamily zoning districts, it was removed. It is a conditional use permit in all of our single-family zoning districts, and that remains currently. What this action would do is replace it where it was back in 2011, exactly as it was, in all of those zoning districts as a use by right, and then a conditional use permit in a neighborhood conservation zoning, which is considered a single-family zoning.
Okay. What questions do we have for Chairman on this? Okay. What public comment do we have on this? Hmm. Any none? I'll bring you back to the council.
And may we go to the second reading?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to go to the second reading. Sondra, would you please call?
Shotmire.
Yes.
Adam.
Yes.
Long.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Marsh.
Yes.
Kenyon.
Yes.
Petty.
Yes.
Kennet.
Yes.
Okay. Number 5. Coming Go LC Agreement. Resolution to approve the Fourth Amendment to Land Sale Agreement with Coming Go LC to extend the closing date to no later than April 21, 2014, and to agree to equally share the city's portion of the cost of a dedicated left-turn lane. Chris?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. As you all know, the city has entered in a contract with Coming Go to sell about two acres of property at the intersection of Huntsville and Happy Hollow on Highway 16. There've been, this is the Fourth Amendment, so there've been other amendments, obviously. This amendment is related to two things. The first is a cost share that we've been able to get with the Highway Department for the cost of widening the highway. The Highway Department, during the permitting process, told Coming Go that they did have to widen the highway to make the signal function and make the new street intersection function properly. So we did negotiate an agreement with the Highway Department to cost share 50% of the cost of that. So this agreement with Coming Go will provide for the cost share of the city's portion, half of the cost of the intersection work. It's estimated at $250,000, so the city's half would be $125,000 to the Highway Department, and then splitting that with Coming Go, $62,500. The other part of that is just extending the closing date to no later than April 21, and that's just to get some of these other things taken care of. So I'll answer any questions.
All right. What questions left for Chris on this?
I want to thank Chris for his hard work with the Highway Department, because I was afraid that they were not going to cost share. That was their initial response to us, and I was having difficulty with Coming Go to cost share $250,000. They've already invested a lot of money, and, you know, not only are they buying it from us for $1,155,000, they've also already paid almost $100,000 as their share of the demolition costs. They have other substantial costs that they're still looking at, and so they were doing a little pushback. And finally, when Chris was able to get the Highway Department to cost share with us, then Coming Go came on board and said, yes, they would, they would cost share with us like they have in many other things. This traffic signal and new road here is going to be very beneficial, not only to our other parcel, our commercial parcel that we have yet to sell, but also to that neighborhood in, along Ray Avenue, which currently in the morning has a very difficult time turning left onto Huntsville. This new signal will give them a protected left, basically, or at least they'll be able to get them out either onto Huntsville Road or onto 15th Street, and so will, I think,[1555.15]